Howell Township Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 27th, 2020, copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 27th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 27th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On October 2nd, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be held remotely on Zoom using communication equipment due to COVID-19 restrictions. Please note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. For members of the public, you will remain in the audience until the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comment on an application. At that time, I ask you to raise your hands and you will be brought into the meeting one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozovic? I have not heard from him. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Keith Kudrick has been excused. Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Bavai? I have not seen Mr. Bavai either. I know he had trouble logging in. Mr. Everett?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, I think we go into the pledge. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
All right. For those that can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving abroad and here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
Okay, do we have any vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Uh, any, and correspondence, we have a couple of ordinances.
Yes, and I also have an email from Vince Halloran. He is the attorney for Omnicost Realty, which is the second application on tonight's agenda. They were supposed to meet with the Environmental Commission. Unfortunately, they could not meet with them in November due to other applicants being scheduled prior to them. So they now have an appointment with the Environmental Commission on December 9th. So they asked if we would kindly carry this matter to December 17th, 2020 with no further notice, and they don't expire till the end of December.
Okay.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, the application of Omnicost Realty Incorporated, case number SP-1076, will be carried to the Board's December 17th, 2020 virtual meeting. Eileen, the directions on how to access the meeting on the 17th are the same as tonight or will they be different?
No, they're the same as tonight and they will be on the agenda.
Okay, and the agenda will be available at least 10 days prior. All documents associated with the application are available online. The meeting begins 7 o'clock. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is the dates for next year. I'll send them out tomorrow if everybody could look at them so we can discuss them at the meeting on the 17th. Uh, there are a few conflicts. And after that, the only other thing we have to comment on the ordinances tonight.
Okay. Um, if you guys didn't see in the background, it seems that my daughter's swim meet ended a little earlier than anticipated. So, Mr. Cuchero, I'm gonna let Nick take over as the chairman for right now and I'm gonna listen in and make comment appropriately, if that's okay.
The meeting is now yours, Vice Chairman.
Okay, so we're moving on to correspondence and the ordinance reviews for consistency with the master plan. I guess, Eileen, we have four of them tonight.
Yes, we do.
So, A being ordinance O-20, O-20-18 to amend Chapter 188-4 of Definitions.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to go one by one, Ron, or?
Um, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we'll go one by one and I'll just remind the Board members that you're not approving or we're not approving anything. It's your finding that there is substantial consistency with the master plan or not substantial consistency with the master plan. If you feel it necessary, you can also make comments. And, you know, I just went back just to kind of familiarize myself with it. Or re-familiarize myself. For the Board's edification, there is a New Jersey Supreme Court decision that talks about what substantial consistency is. And it's the Manalupin Realty, the Township Committee case, and it's a Supreme Court case from 1995. And essentially what it says is there could be some inconsistency with the master plan, but to find that there is substantial consistency, um, you have to show that the, or you have to find that the proposed ordinance does not, and this is a quote from the case, substantially or materially undermine or distort the basic provisions and objectives of the master plan. So if you find that the proposed ordinance does not do that, you can vote that there is substantial consistency with the master plan. And I would leave it to our Board's planner, you know, to offer his opinion as to, you know, uh, the issue of substantial consistency.
Sure. Um, yeah, um, I, you know, agree with everything that Ron said and with respect to ordinance 0-20-18 is essentially an ordinance that adds a definition for assisted living facility and craft distillery to the existing ordinance. This ordinance, as well as the other ones tonight, which, uh, you know, comment on as we go, uh, they're the result of a detailed, um, transparent planning process that began with the, um, meetings of the Master Plan Subcommittee with respect to the Master Plan Reexamination Report and the Land Use Plan Amendment. Those meetings were publicly noticed. They, um, there were numerous meetings, at least five, um, if not more. And, um, you know, at each of those meetings, each of the recommendations within those two studies or those two reports were discussed in detail. And, um, subsequent to the conclusion of those meetings, the Master Plan Reexamination Report and the Land Use Plan Amendment, they were both heard at a publicly noticed hearing before the Planning Board, discussed before the Planning Board, and approved. And those are the 2019 Reexamination Report and the, um, 2019 Land Use Plan Amendment. With respect to these definitions, the craft distillery definition is actually mentioned, um, in several places in both reports, and this definition is, is precisely consistent with what is, is recommended within, um, both the Master Plan Reexamination Report and the Land Use Plan Amendment. The assisted living facility definition is not mentioned in there, however, it's essentially, um, adding a definition for a commonly, um, known and found use throughout the state in order to update the overall ordinance. I, I, you know, as a professional planner, um, in my view, that is a, a good practice. It's in accordance with best planning practices and it is not inconsistent with the master plan. And based upon that, I, I would find and recommend that, um, well, it's my professional opinion that both of these definitions are consistent with the master plan.
Substantially consistent.
Substantially consistent, thank you, Ron.
So is there any, any questions, comments from anybody else on the Board?
Yeah, Nick, I have a question. The, the council meeting that happened a couple of weeks ago that the, we got a 3-2 vote, uh, in favor of changing, um, Yellow Brook Road, a couple of these AR-2s, and that's part of this, that's part of this, correct?
Well, let's get there. That's not part of this ordinance.
Okay, so this, this is before that.
Yeah, there's, there's four ordinances on the agenda. That's one of them, but not this one.
Okay.
I, I have a question too. Um, when, when was the last meeting for the Master Plan Subcommittee? Did we even have one in 2020?
There was no Master Plan Subcommittee's in 2020. There was no Subcommittee even appointed in 2020. But the report was approved in 2019, not 20.
Right, right. I just like, 2020 is such a game-changing year. Um, I got a little bit of, of it, but.
Yeah, just to, just in case it helps, um, you know, for the, for the record, the meetings in 2019 that, that led up to the adoption of the Master Plan Reexamine, the, um, the Land Use Plan Amendment, it was all pre-COVID. They were publicly noticed, um, you know, and they were, they were, uh, I, like I said, I think there were at least five, if not around eight, I would say, um, meetings. So there were, there were several of them. And, um, yeah, there was, it was a completely transparent process.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, Ron, does, question, does the public get to comment on any of these?
There's, there's no, uh, public requirement. You can do it if you want, but there's not a statutory requirement.
Um, being, being that, I, I will certainly open up if there's anyone that has comment from the.
Hold on. We have a couple people want to ask questions. Anyone that comes in and asks questions needs to have audio and video. You need to be sworn and give your name and address. I have Joan Osborne here.
Yes, I'm here.
You need to have video.
I don't know if I can do that, but I'm gonna try.
There you go.
Okay.
Just, let me just swear you in for us. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this Board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Joan Osborne. I prefer not to give my address. Um, I live in Howell.
Well.
I know at the council, they're not requiring that anymore.
One of the issues for us is we determine who our interested parties are not. Mr. Chairman, I, I leave it to you, but I can tell you for development applications, it's not gonna, it's not the law. So, you know, if, if you're satisfied, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, stood on the Environmental Commission with Joan, so I know where she lives, but in past minutes as well, we can certainly find out.
Yeah, go ahead.
My, my only comment is on the, um, the issue of the approvals of the zoning changes, uh, you know.
That's not, that's not what we're doing. We're, we're taking.
And I understand, and I understand you're talking about the first ordinance. It, it's just pertaining to the comments on substantial compliance with the existing ordinance and the, um, Subcommittee Approval Process and the public notice of those meetings and the ability of the public to participate. Um, I attended at least one of those meetings and there really was no ability for the public to participate in the Subcommittee Meetings. And, and I just wanted that to be clear for the record. Um, and when these changes were passed, uh, I believe it was, um, at the end of December last year, at the end of a late meeting and, um, you know, there, there were comments made requesting that there be additional, um, review of the proposed changes, um, before, and, and there were consideration of possibly reserving on it because of the warehouse issues. And I, I would just bring that up that, you know, maybe you should look at this again with regard to the warehouse issues because we're really getting slammed.
Well, again, that's not what this ordinance is about. So when we come up to the relevant ordinance, you can certainly make that comment, but it's not relevant to, to this ordinance.
No, I, I will just leave it. Uh, you could put it in the record that, that it would be the same comment I would have for each of these. Thank you.
Do you have any else, Eileen?
Yes, I have someone else. Hold on one second. Takes a little switching around, so give me a minute.
I, I had another question too. If I may. Go ahead, Paul. Uh, if this was reviewed in 2019, why, why the timing? Why now? Why late 2020?
We're not the governing body, so, you know, we, we take it as it's given to us. We're not the body that adopted it on first reading. So, you know, it's not, uh, you know, an answer that we can give, really.
You have Tina Smilik in the audience?
Tina, you have to go off of mute.
Hold on.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this Board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Tina Smilik, 33 Charles Street, Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, what, what, what is, what's being changed in these definitions? What's the difference between the previous one and this one?
In both these cases, there, there were no previous definitions. These are brand-new definitions.
Okay, so these are two, these are two new definitions. So we're adding, this doesn't only clarify what these are, it clarif, it, it's adding them to our zoning, which we know where we don't have right now.
It, yeah, it's adding brand-new definitions to the zoning ordinance.
Well, just to be clear, Peter, though, it's not adding new uses, it's adding definitions to existing permitting, permitted uses that did not exist in the ordinance previously, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But the uses were always permitted.
Do the, do changing these definitions change the definitions for the other, for other zoning areas?
Well, the answer is no. I mean, the, the issue was there was no definition. So if this was listed as a permitted use, it lacked a definition. So what it does is, rather than Boards having to interpret what it means, there's now a plain language definition. So it doesn't change the permitted uses anywhere, but what it does is it more particularly, you know, lays out what the use means and it takes the, you know, the interpretation out of the process.
So what is the definition? Because us as residents do not get to see what you guys are seeing. What is the current rest definition that you're presenting?
Tina, you want to do that?
Or, um, yeah, so the definition for assisted living facility is facilities that include continuum of care services that include independent living, assisted living, and acute care beds, and the accessible uses that are customarily incidental to and located on the same lot as the principal use. Such accessory uses shall be for the exclusive use of residents and their guests and the staff of the facility. And then the second definition for craft distillery is a facility holding a limited license for the production of alcoholic beverages by the state of New Jersey where the distilling of liquors is performed. If such a facility shall follow the provisions set forth in NJSA 33:1 through 10, subsection 3A through C.
Okay, thank you.
And just in terms of the availability, Eileen, I think on the Township's website, there was an agenda that had links to the ordinances, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They have links to the ordinances.
And they were also posted on the bulletin board when the council had their meeting.
Yeah, but we're not allowed into the building.
In terms of what you have easier access to, they, there were, uh, links on the actual agenda if you went, and, and in the future, you know, for things that are, the Board is considering, that's, that's the common practice.
Okay, I'll go look. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tina. Is there anybody else, Eileen?
I have no one else.
Okay, then we would just need a motion that proposed ordinance 0-20-18 is substantially consistent with the master plan.
We have a motion.
So move.
Back in.
Mr. Nacastro with a second by.
You can give it to Evelyn.
Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Dorado?
No.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Everett?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that, Dave?
No.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the, uh, the next correspondence is for ordinance O-20-19, which is to amend Chapter 188-77 entitled Highway Development 1. Peter, do you want to take the floor on this one?
Sure, um.
No, what, hold? Did I, go ahead, I.
Yeah. You want, you want me to start?
You would.
Okay. So this ordinance, um, O-20-19 adds two new permitted uses to the, two new principal uses to the HD1 Zone, Highway Development 1 Zone. The uses are, of course, um, the craft distillery and assisted living facilities. Both of those uses were, of course, the, the definitions in ordinance O-20-18 that we had just discussed. The recommendation here, uh, came out of the same process that I had referenced previously in my testimony about ordinance O-20-18 with respect to, um, this recommendation coming out of the Master Plan Reexamination and Land Use Plan Amendment process. This, um, ordinance, uh, particularly the craft distiller was referenced specifically in, uh, both the Master Plan Reexam, 2019 Master Plan Reexamine, the 2019 Land Use Plan Amendment, Amendment, Amendment. And, um, the assisted living facilities, um, again, since it wasn't referenced in those documents, it was added in as a definition. Now it's added in as a use in this zone. Um, you know, for the same reasons stated, uh, previously, I think both of these definitions, one literally is recommend, uh, recommended in both the Master Plan Reexam and the Land Use Plan Amendment. The other, I think, is, um, is a, simply an updating of, of the ordinance and an updating of this zone to reflect, uh, a suitable use for the zone. It is a highway commercial zone. So, um, in my opinion, uh, this ordinance amendment is substantially consistent with the master plan.
So, Peter, just before we go on then, the question that I asked you with regard to the definitions, I think you need to revise your answer a little bit. That, um, I mean, craft distilleries and assisted living were permitted uses in many zones, but they are being added as a new use in the HD1 Zone.
That's correct.
Yeah, because I think you said before that, um, it lacked definition, but we weren't changing the zoning, but they existed in other zones without a definition. So we've brought a definition to those, uh, zones, but we are adding it to this zone where it did not previously exist as permitted uses.
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah, but I got a question. HD1, Peter, is Route 9?
It is.
And we already have like assistant living on Route 9 as in the form of brandy wine?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any, any comments?
Peter, uh, this, Peter, as far as the HD, is, is this only for HD1 or is this gonna be for anywhere in the town?
It's only for HD1. This, this, it's only for HD1.
Well, Peter, I think though, you know, the more complete answer is the definitions that you, that were just, um, part of the previous ordinance, those definitions apply to these uses no matter what zone they are in. This ordinance, however, makes those two uses permitted uses in the HD1 Zone where they didn't previously exist. But if you are a craft distillery or an assisted living facility anywhere in town, you are subject to those two new definitions.
Agreed.
Peter, that's the problem that I have, why I voted no on the last, on the first one. I don't want these, these coming up, popping up all over town. Okay.
But they're popping up on HD1 Zones, Route 9, correct, Peter?
That, that's correct, yeah. This ordinance is, um, I mean, this is, this is, this changes specifically for the HD1 ordinance. And, um, I'm not sure that craft distilleries are permitted in many other, other zones throughout the town.
Well, we, we need to make sure where they're permitted. I don't have a problem with the craft distilleries or the assisted living is going on HD1. That's fine. That's all I'm asking, Peter. I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I.
I mean, I just want, I just want a clearer understanding. I don't have an issue like Mr. Nacastro, um, Route 9, HD1, or if it's Route 33, if that's considered HD1, okay?
So Route 33 is considered HD3.
That's a three, okay. So if this is only for HD1, for assisted living and for, and for distill, um, these craft, this craft, uh, situation, then I want, we need it to be worded that way. I don't, you don't want this popping up, you know, two, two months from now and they want to put one on 547, you know, off of Southern Avenue or, you know, down by the high school.
If that was the case, they would have to go to the zoning board.
Well.
Or use variance.
Correct.
Well, if that's the case, uh, Mr. Nacastro, then why did the council last week vote to change Yellow Brook Road? If those, if those.
I'm not on Yellow Brook and I can't answer that question for you, but we're just talking about HD1.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the issue we have, a couple of us. Not all of us, a couple of us have this issue. So the, the council last week voted 3 to 2 to switch Yellow Brook Road for a couple pieces of property over to an SD, SD Light, which is gonna be coming up on that's, you know, one of these ordinance. Now, if they want, if those homo, if those property owners wanted it switched, how can they go to zoning? How can they go to land use? Why is the council overriding all this?
Hey, John, John, just, all right, we'll, we'll get to that point when we get to that ordinance.
Yeah, well, I'm just, Nick, I was just wondering here, if I vote yes here, that it's HD1 only, I have no problem with it.
And that's exactly how it reads, John.
Yeah, and just, just in case it helps, I did a, a search of the ordinance online and my understanding is this, if the HD1 would be the, the only zone that permits distilleries based on that ordinance search. So, um, it would, it would just be limited to Route 9 in this case.
Okay.
I have a, I have a bigger issue, more like on a macro side, that the fact that this hasn't been done, this, everything it said is done pre-COVID. I mean, we're gonna be approving craft distilleries that probably can't open, and then we're gonna also be approving for assisted care facilities that had a horrible issue during COVID. I mean, that's, that, that's the problem gonna happen with all these ordinance. I understand everything was transparent, but was, this was done pre-COVID. Much, it's a much different climate than in 2020 than it was in 2019.
Yeah, and as, and as far as the master plan, when I was sworn into the Planning Board, um, I remember Eileen was trying to organize a committee to meet on the master plan to review a bunch of these, you know, issues. And I guess, you know, with the COVID and everything else that went on, we didn't get a, a committee together, which is understandable. But I think moving forward, you know, we, we need our chair or vice chair to maybe get everyone together, form this committee, to look at this master plan before making me, these major decisions on, on, on these big cha, on these changes. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Cucci, Mr. Mr. Cuchero and, and, and Mr. Cuchero and, uh, Peter. I think, I think we need a little lesson 101 on how the, how these things come about because Mr. Dorado made a statement that there should be no additional development on Route 9, if any way should perform. Somehow COVID has limited the ability to have distilleries and assisted living facilities. And frankly, I don't, I don't agree with that statement. I think it's.
I didn't say any development on Route 9, but he said specifically craft distillers and.
That's exactly what you said. Because how could you say that a distillery and assisted living facility on Route 9 is not an applicable? That's exactly what you said, because how could you say that a distillery and assisted living facility on route nine is not an applicable use on route nine, on route nine?
In twenty nine, in twenty nineteen it might have been, you think in twenty twenty it is? We're going to approve something, it's, it's going to prove, yeah, yeah, how many, how many new, how many new establishments are being built now with everything, they're not doing anything right now.
Yeah, but the problem is, is if we don't have the uses available and one comes around, they won't come.
Or they'll go to the zoning board and they'll be overwhelmed.
And, and then, yeah, then they'll go to zoning boards, they'll have all those issues.
Can I, can I, can I speak to the zoning board issue?
Yeah, let's have one-on-one, let's have one-on-one.
Yeah, because that's not the way that planning is supposed to work. So, the way that, the process that the municipal land use law lays out and the process that has been announced in our courts is that zoning is supposed to be done through varying, uh, through ordinance, not variance. You're not supposed to take it sort of in a ad hoc basis and determine on individual, uh, basis what's going to go in a particular zone. What determines what should go in a zone is your master plan, your master plan serves as a policy document which guides development in the municipality, and that's exactly why the municipal land use law requires that these ordinances be referred to you. And in fact, there's different voting requirements for the governing body depending upon how you vote. If you vote that it is substantially consistent, then a majority of whoever happens to be at a governing body meeting can adopt the, uh, the ordinance. If you find that it is not substantially consistent, then it has to be approved by a majority of the full authorized membership, no matter how many people are there. So, three are there, it would require three, if four are there, it would still require three, uh, rather than a mere, uh, majority. But what the courts say is that for non-inherently beneficial uses, which both of the, well, uh, the distillery certainly, uh, is not an inherently beneficial use. You're not supposed to take them by use variance. Um, you're supposed to, if you want them, to adopt an ordinance and you adopt standards that are going to be followed. The case law is very clear that use variances for non-inherently beneficial uses are to be granted, they use the word sparingly. And every single case talks about how if it's something that you want, you should adopt an ordinance rather than taking it one by one. So merely saying, you know, well, just send them to the zoning board, it's not the way it's supposed to work. Further, when you send them to the zoning board, it, they're not going as a permitted use, they're going for a D one variance, and they have very high burdens of proof that they, that they have to meet. Um, so it's just not the way that the law, uh, is, is written. The way, just, I guess to briefly summarize, you're supposed to adopt the master plan, the governing body adopts ordinances which are substantially consistent with the master plan. They come back, they are referred back to this board to confirm the substantial consistency. They go back to the governing body for a second reading and a pub, and a, and a public hearing. But the legislative process, time and time again, statutorily and through case law, that's the way that new uses are supposed to come into municipalities. It downright discourages and, and, uh, tells you you cannot just keep granting use variances. Because at some point in time, what you also do is, according to the case law, you usurp the legislative function of the governing body. If you start granting a bunch of use variances for particular uses in a zone, you've defeated the, uh, the zoning, which is adopted through an ordinance. And you've actually taken on a, uh, a, a role that is exclusively within the jurisdiction of the governing body. So the whole system is set up this way, that there's a legislative way to adopt new, to permit new uses, and you're not supposed to do it, you know, uh, via the zoning board process, if you can avoid it.
And, and Ron, would it be fair to say that by actually defining where we want these types of uses, which are, are juices that are used in the state of New Jersey elsewhere? If you don't define it, then developer, if they could prove the appropriate hardship and the variances is necessary to be granted, they get an opportunity to put it wherever they want in Howell. However, if we actually define it and, and say where we want to have it, they really have a real heavy road of where, you know, they want to put it, if it's not on our HD one.
Well, I, I, I would say that when you're, when you are not inherently beneficial use, you have a substantial burden under the Medici, uh, Medici case, which is a Supreme Court case. You have an exceptionally high burden when a governing body has actually engaged in the legislative process and made the determination as to where in the municipality you should go. Because then you are going against, you know, a, an actual legislative process, rather than the absence of a legislative process. So, the first is hard, it's exceptionally, or it should be exceptionally hard after the legislative process.
So Ron, that, Ron, that goes back to what I just said before about what the council did, you know, at the last meeting, by then voting to change those zonings to, to the SED light. Didn't they just bypass everything you just talked about?
No, no, because, because the council is, it's a two-part proper, or actually a three-part process. So, they didn't adopt a zoning ordinance, um, and Peter, just to make sure, that's one of the ordinances we're looking at tonight?
It is.
Okay, so in order to get the process started, you have to have what's called a first reading or introduction. It's not adopting the ordinance, all it is, is saying that the council intends to hold a future public hearing on it. And what it allows for is that ordinance to be referred to this body for determination. It then goes back to the council and they'll have a second reading and a public hearing, and there'll be a vote to adopt it. That vote was not to adopt, it was just to introduce, so the zoning hasn't changed yet.
May I?
Of course.
Um, it, it's interesting that when we did introduce, that there would be no votes. The, uh, as he said, the idea of introducing is so that it can be fully vetted publicly, uh, at the council level. Although this has been fully vetted with the master plan subcommittee, and although it be two thousand nineteen, the end of two thousand nineteen, uh, you're right, COVID came along. However, I don't think that we should put off properly zoning anything, because COVID is here. I think that we can safely assume at some point in time, we will be somewhat COVID free without the restrictions that we have endured. So, uh, I don't look at COVID as a reason to deter doing our job at the council level, let alone at a planning board level. So, that argument I would find, um, empty.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one other thing for Peter, Peter, let, because I know we're losing focus, Mr. Leggio's focused on SED light, but I want to go back to the HD one zone for these two specific uses. Age restricted, it's my understanding as people age out of their homes, people that live in Howell, they want to stay close to their families, um, their kids live in Howell or, or, or a nearby town. And that these age restricted homes give the ability to people who can't stay in their home but want independent living, um, and still stay by their grandchildren and by their family members. This is why this definition is now being explained as why it is, and that we already have them existing already in Howell, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, yeah, it helps, um, bring existing uses more into conformity and it also helps, uh, increase the variety of housing options in the community, which is one of the purposes of municipal land use law.
And Michael Brewerys came up because back in, I believe, two thousand seventeen is when they started popping up in towns like Belmar and other areas, and this was the new trend. And Howell wanting to bring some new types of businesses into, you know, into Howell, the Michael Brewery seems to be like the hottest, you know, one of the newest things coming out. And again, that's why the master plan subcommittee looked at this use.
That's correct, yeah, I mean, over time, new uses come about, some uses, I mean, distilleries have been around for a while, but not as, um, as prominently as they are now, and it's.
So when you have members of the community who say, oh, another bank, another CVS or another Dunkin' Donuts, and the master plan subcommittee and the master plan come up with new uses to recommend for the governing body, this is the process that they go through, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Castro, just to, just to clarify, you know, I mean, I don't want to go back and forth with you, okay? I have no issue on route nine with these, with these changes, okay, so make the record straight, I do have an issue in other parts of town. So whatever way you're going to spin it, when we get to the next one, you and Evelyn want to spin it up, whatever you guys want to do, make it, make it seem like the planning board is, is, doesn't want to put this stuff through. Let's clarify the way it's supposed to be clarified, I don't have an issue with.
Clarify, John, John, if you read the ordinance, the ordinance says the two uses are for the HD one zone.
And that's it, you clarify, Peter, Peter clarified it, but before he didn't clarify it, and with the help of Ron, now, now we're okay, so you want to vote on it? No problem.
Good, okay.
So we're good, let's move.
I will be honest, thank, thank, thank God Brian's home, thank you.
I'm home.
A pleasure.
Thanks, you're welcome, thanks.
Thanks for going ninety down the parkway now.
Ah, there you go. I did this speed limit, don't worry. Okay. Give me a second so I can get the, you can keep going, I'm just getting my, my laptop up.
Actually, Mr. Chair, we're ready for the, uh, for a motion now as to whether proposed ordinance zero dash twenty dash nineteen is, is or is not substantially consistent with the master plan.
And, and Brian, just FYI, um, I know it's not, Ron said it's not by law that we have to open it to the public. I did on the first ordinance, I would recommend doing it just because of the times, and I know there's people that are interested in this, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let, well, let me ask you a question, I think Ron said that at the next reading, at the next reading of this, after we send this back to the council, that's, that's the time where the public can have comment on the ordinance, correct? At the council meeting, there's still another opportunity?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a public hearing, so as many interested parties as want to, you know, participate can participate. And it's more, it's more global than, than we, um, than our role, because our role is really limited just to substantial consistency, not whether, you know, it's something you want or don't want.
Thank you for that clarification, so with the fact that it's just, just to determine whether it's substantially consistent, I think that if the public has comment for it, proper place would be in front of the council where they can have that appropriate spirited debate and actually make a change. You know, maybe something, if, if something's not appropriate, or if people, enough people feel that it's something should be changed, that's where it should be changed. So, so I'm not going to open it for public comment for this particular ordinance. I may, I may hold the, uh, that comment for some of these other ordinances, let's see how they go. So this one in particular, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that ordinance zero twenty nineteen is substantially, um, in keeping with the master plan.
Second.
Well, I have a second.
Who was that second? Mr. Dorado?
Stay.
Epstein?
Yep.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance zero dash two zero, two zero. I guess, uh, Peter, if you want to.
Sure.
Introduce that ordinance and explain to everyone what is in that ordinance.
Absolutely, yeah, so, the ordinance zero dash two zero dash two zero, um, establishes a new zone known as the SED light zone, special economic government light zone. Um, the purpose of the zone, I'll just read it into the record, it's two sentences, is, uh, the purpose of the SED light zone is to provide for a variety of economic development opportunities in areas of the township where appropriate infrastructure is available. But such industries will have a minimal impact on nearby residential communities. The SED light district allows many of the uses of the SED district, which is an existing district, but removes many of the most intense and disruptive uses, effectively creating a light intensity industrial zone. Representative uses, I don't know if you want me to, I could go through a couple of the uses or.
Yeah, what I would like you to do is, is, is there a way for you to summarize the, I don't know if you, you're prepared for it, maybe putting it on the spot. But are you able to, to indicate what is not in this zone that is in the regular SED? That would be considered an intense and disruptive use?
I am, yes, I, I went through it and, um, the uses that were removed, um, include leather products, uh, manufacturer, stone and clay manufacturer, and fabricated metal. And then in addition, certain uses are prohibited just to make the, um, the manufacturing uses, and there's, there's a few like manufacturing uses included in the ordinance, um, none of the ones I just mentioned, of course, but, um, ones that are specifically prohibited to really make the point to any, uh, potential developers. Others, you know, the prohibited uses include asphalt and concrete, um, lumber and wood products, um, sexually oriented businesses, tattoo, body piercing, and fulfillment centers, which is a, the most intensive form of a warehouse development.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? So with regard to some of that, I did have a conversation with the township planner, um, Jennifer Beam, and.
Okay.
Um, I asked her, you know, if, if we had actually a definition for fulfillment center. And I've actually gone through in some of the other municipalities that I represent, you know, um, that didn't have definitions. You know, what is a fulfillment center versus a warehouse versus a distribution center? You know, I think it's a good thing to put it on the prohibited list, but I think that to the extent we do not have a definition for it, we should put a very specific definition in the ordinance as to what a fulfillment center is. Um, also with regard to the permitted uses, there are some other towns in Monmouth County that have actually taken the position that warehousing and distribution centers are different types of uses. It's not the same use, so, um, to the extent that we may need to straighten that out in, uh, you know, from a definition standpoint, I would recommend that also. Furthermore, anything else that's specifically listed as permitted or prohibited, you know, I would just recommend going through to make sure, one, that we do have a definition, and if we don't, we adopt one. And two, if we do have a definition, just making sure that that definition has kept pace with the times, and it still says what we as a municipality want it to say, and doesn't require any kind of, uh, revisions. I think now's the time to do it, you know, it's, uh, fortuitous now that we're dealing with, um, you know, a new zone. But it also goes towards what Peter was talking about before, which, you know, ten years ago, I don't think anyone was talking about like fulfillment centers. Now, you know, our economy is such that, you know, they're, they're coming everywhere. And, you know, it's a, it's always a struggle to have your ordinance keep track with technology and to keep track with modern trends and uses, but we have that opportunity now, so I just encourage, uh, the town to, uh, to consider that. The only other thing, Peter, I just had one other question, um, on subsection C, additional requirements.
Okay.
The first is multi-tenant structures in the SED light zone, all structures shall be devoted to a single user. What, what does that mean, a sing, it's a multi-tenant building, what is a single user for a multi-tenant building?
Um, so, a, a single user, I mean, I, I'm not sure that it's, it's defined in here, but my understanding of it is, you know, that would be a, a single operator, although they may have different tenants, um, let me see here, the user. Now, you know what, um, I'm sorry, and it's, there's a lot to unpack here, um. So it's multi-tenant structures in the SED light zone period, and then first phrase is all structures shall be devoted to a single user, provided however, that includes with a gross floor area in excess of twenty thousand square feet, comma, shall be permitted. Um, provided that the minimum tenant space shall not be less than twenty-five hundred square feet, so, um.
Question is, if it's, if we're beginning with the fact that it's multi-tenant, doesn't that mean there's multiple users, or is it talking about the ownership of the building? Because multi-tenant means it's not single tenant.
Absolutely, yeah, um, I mean, devoted to a single user, I mean, I think.
Well, then I, I guess my, I would also ask or recommend that that be clarified, you know, but in, in the ordinance. you know, in, in the ordinance by the council, because I'm not exactly sure what it, what it means.
Well, Ron, I have a question too, you know, do we really need to create this SED Light Zone? Didn't you, didn't we just say that it would, you know, the developer, you know, try to get a variance? If they, if that's what they really want to do there? You know, so what is the creation of this SED Light Zone gonna really accomplish? You know, you have farms all over the town, AR six, you know, so if the council stayed two years and decided, the whole town could change from, you know, to HR one, HD, whatever that is for the Route nine thing.
The idea of the SED Light is a less intense use than what is presently capable of going there.
Well, not, not really according to Peter, it's not clear.
Is to have things zoned where people, where applicants know where they can go. And when somebody wants to put something in, the path of least resistance is usually their pocketbook. So if there's a place to put something in a town, which creates less havoc on our infrastructure, then hopefully that's where they go. When you put people, when they go to the zoning board and something gets, like a fulfillment center is like an Amazon, you certainly wouldn't want that there. Something like that you would want on a major highway, I ninety-five, something of that nature. But the idea is to let people know where they are able to go. And SED Light is in fact light, lighter than what is permitted, and in fact is presently. So we're trying to lighten that, that particular road as opposed to keep piling it on. I mean, there's some severe uses on that road presently, I think you would agree.
This might be a question for Ron or Peter, but I just wanna clarify. This particular ordinance we're discussing right now, the only function of it is to establish what SED Light in fact means. It's the creation of mission, not a location of a zoning.
Yes.
Just establishing what SED Light is.
That's correct, this, this establishes a new zone and we've yet to establish where that new zone could occur.
Right, and, and, and we have comments. Our attorney has made some recommendations. Fair statement, Ron?
Yes.
And, and with that, this is, this is the ability for the board to provide our comments back to the council, so they can decide how they want to adjust the ordinance.
And Chairman, if I may, just to give a little bit more history for some of the members and probably the audience. My understanding is these zones come out of issues that the town has seen in the past. For example, we have seen in the SED Zone, like an LNL that was very controversial, that went to the zoning board, that was a very intrusive use in, in a specific area. This zone now says, from our past, we now know that we want uses that are less intrusive to Howard Township, and I think this is what this zone establishes. Whereas warehouses typically had five thousand square foot minimum, minimal for a single user with a fifty thousand square foot, this now lessens that because we're seeing applications coming in for over a million square feet. So you gotta understand how these zones get created. It's, they're created because of past practices that the town has seen, has not worked for the town, and now you're creating zones that make them less intrusive. Basically, is that correct, Pete?
That's correct.
Pete, is AR six lighter than SED as far as for?
Mr. Leggio, you keep, Mr. Leggio, I gotta cut you off, my friend. You keep bringing up AR six, we're not talking about the next ordinance, that's the next ordinance. Please just stick to this one, or we're never gonna get through this tonight.
Alright.
The next one, you can bring all that stuff up. It's, it's just simply as a board, do we want to, do we feel that an SED Light ordinance and definition of that is substantially consistent with the master plan? And our attorney has made some recommendations that in some ways it's not. There's some, some lack of some definitions that need to be clarified.
No, I, I, I didn't mean to say it was not substantially consistent, I was just seeking clarity on, you know, on what some of the text was and recommending definitions so that there was no ambiguity in the future. It was, if I meant, you know, if I came off as saying it was not substantially consistent, it wasn't, I apologize, it wasn't my intent.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just to add to that for the, the purposes of, of the record, my, my professional opinion, just to kind of conclude, you know, from where I started, is that, you know, since this came out of the same process that I had referenced previously from the twenty nineteen Master Plan Reexamination Report and the twenty nineteen Land Use Plan Amendment, the language in this ordinance was recommended, and this language is essentially virtually verbatim from those documents. So I would find similarly to the way I found the similar, the previous ordinances, that this is also substantially consistent with the master plan.
If I may, Chairman, I, I do have a question though, based on Ron's comment of, you know, the definition of fulfillment center, warehouse, distribution center, types of uses, multi-tenant structure, single user, all that stuff. How do we vote on that right now without those being clear?
Well, actually, I'm just reading again the, the multi-tenant. I, I think I understand. Peter, you know, I, I want your opinion on this, don't defer to me in any manner. So it says multi-tenant structures in the SED's Light Zone, and it looks like a period. So it's looking, it's ending there. So it says all structures shall be devoted to a single user. So I guess it's setting it up in the SED Zone that if you're gonna be residential, you must be, it must be just a single, basically a single user, but I guess it's, you know, a single tenant, single family, you know, whatever. Provided however, that if the building, that the buildings with a gross floor area in excess of twenty thousand square feet, multiple tenants shall be permitted. So it's sounding like if you are less than twenty thousand square feet, you must only be single-tenanted. If you are above twenty thousand square feet, you can be multi-tenanted. And if you are above twenty thousand square feet and multi-tenanted, the apartments cannot be less than two thousand five hundred square feet each. Is that, is that the reading of it, Peter?
I, I would agree with that in, in its entirety. I mean, it's, my, my reading of it is, is, you know, if it's twenty thousand square feet or less, you're basically committed to being a single user above that as, as you had stated, I'm in agreement. If with multiple tenants, you have to have a minimum tenant space of not less than twenty five hundred square feet.
But when we say single user, we're really saying either a single tenant, a single owner, you know, a, a, a single family. You know, that, that all would fall within single user.
I agree.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Chairman, that brings some lucidity to, to that issue. Now, the other question with regard to the definitions, I think that, you know, the board can probably determine that it's substantially consistent or not substantially consistent, but just recommend that, you know, it not be left to discretion as to what those or, or interpretation in the future as to what these uses mean, that they just be formally, you know, defined, but as a general matter, you know, the, the uses themselves, you know, either are or are not substantially consistent.
Thank you. And again, this is gonna be going back to the council with our, with our recommendations. And at that point, the public has an option to further discuss this, this ordinance with the council and provide input and feedback, where the council can make additional changes to this, to this ordinance, is that fair statement, Mr. Cuchero?
That's a fair statement, and, you know, depending upon what the quantum of a change is, sometimes it actually requires a reintroduction and a re-referral if the changes, you know, are, are so substantial in nature that they, you know, change the fundamentals of what the, you know, original ordinance was. So that would be, you know, we don't know what any changes may be, if there are going to be any changes. But if there are, they'll be guided by, you know, their council, their attorney, as to whether, you know, they can vote on it that night or whether, you know, they have to send it back with, with provisions.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
And just to clarify that, that's, that, that motion, Mr. Nacastro, was with the the recommendations of our council about the added definitions that need to be clarified?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
No.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes, as long as the clarifications regarding warehouse, distribution, et cetera, are included.
Mr. Everett?
Yes, agreeing with Rob.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next one, it's gonna be in the hot seat here, is gonna be ordinance zero dash two zero dash two one. This is for the rezoning of properties designated AR dash six to SED Light. Mr. Bandicoot, do you wanna explain the reasoning behind and the rationale behind this ordinance and update?
Absolutely, thank you, Chairman. So this ordinance is to rezone properties designated agricultural rural estate ARE six to special economic development light, SED light. The, the ordinance essentially, and I'm not sure, I haven't counted the number of properties, there's a variety of lots, at least, let's see, multiple lots in block one seventy-seven and one eighty, and block one eighty-two as, as identified on the ordinance are proposed to be rezoned from ARE six, as I stated, to SED Light. The tract or portion of the, of the town that's proposed to be rezoned is located south of Route thirty-three, approximately eight hundred feet south of Route thirty-three, along Yellowbrook Road. And it continues both sides of Yellowbrook Road, that word to where it, with an existing SED Zone. So SED bounds this proposed rezoning to the south. To the east is the PRC Zone, to the north is the R three, and to the northwest and existing ARE six of the remainder of the, that existing zone. Reasoning behind this rezoning is that the majority of the existing developed uses are light industrial and commercial. There is, was proximity to Route thirty-three. There's an opportunity to basically take the SEDs, which is located to the south, and establish a gradient of land uses where you have the SED Zone, which is the most intensive, the SED Light, which is less intensive. And then it leads up to the R three, and then Route thirty-three, eight hundred feet away. And it reduces the intensity as, as you move toward Route thirty-three and toward that residential zone that fronts on Route thirty-three. This ordinance, again, it came out of the same process referenced previously with respect to the twenty nineteen Master Plan Reexamination Report and Land Use Plan Amendment. And, you know, it's the same lot and blocks that are referenced within that, the same mapping in the same proposed area. So my, my professional opinion is that it is substantially consistent with the Master Plan Reexamination Report and the Land Use Plan Amendment.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Leggio? Now, now, now you can discuss.
Listen, Chairman, my issue is the council stepped in here and they're changing these over to this SED Light or whatever, whatever you wanna call it. That road is all commercial, ninety-nine percent of it. You know, as far as what Nacastro said before, LNL for paving, Stavola's been on that road for like fifty years. You have the concrete plant on that road, you have Orange Construction's been there for fifty years. That road's commercial, you know what I mean? I just don't understand why the council had to step in to change these zones. If somebody wants to buy that property and change it over to SED Light or SED, they should follow the proper channels, they shouldn't, the, the council shouldn't be making those decisions. I'm concerned for the future, okay, in other parts of the town that have AR six, AR three, are they gonna do the same? Are they gonna come in and say, you know what, time to change this road over, time to change this road over? And the people, you know, surrounding developments, surrounding businesses in those areas are gonna be affected. You know, this one street already has a ton of commercial on it, leading out to Route thirty-three, which is a good idea. Access to a main highway, access back to thirty-four to eighteen. Okay, this should have been set over here in this area years ago, instead of visiting it now. You know, heck, if I had a piece of property on that road that was, that was Zodar, you know, AR six or whatever, now it's gonna be SED Light, I guess it's, I'm gonna get a big payday then. If it, you know, that's, that's my concern. So, you know, I'm sorry if I upset some people here by asking some rational questions about the future of the town. We have fifty-five square miles, and there's.
Mr. Leggio, you're not upsetting us.
Just asking a question. I'm just, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get some clarification. You know, if we vote yes on this road, changing over to this SED Light, okay, that's just a recommendation back to the council, like, 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 like Ron is saying. And what is?
Why don't we ask, why don't we ask a question of our professionals? Why they made, why, why the change? What, what, what does this, what does this do? Right now, you have existing non-conforming properties in the area, correct, Peter?
That's correct. And so.
And those, and those existing, and is it fair for me to say, as Mr. Leggio pointed out, those existing non-conforming properties are what, what type of properties we are going to prohibit in an SED Light Zone, correct?
Correct.
So if there's, so if there's a change, if there's a change or upgrade that needs to take place on those properties, they, they're gonna have to bear a burden of proof of why they can't meet the SED Light definition anymore.
That's correct, yeah, they would, they would have, especially if they're gonna expand their operations, they would have to appear before the, the zoning board because of the expansion of an existing non-conforming use.
So, so they would not be able to expand their present existing type of construction without proving that they need a variance?
That's correct. And, I mean, building off of that, it establishes a set of uses that are more compatible with those existing uses that are, that are, you know, been there a long time, but they would be, the uses that would be prohibited under this. This ordinance also establishes other less intensive uses that would be more compatible than, let's say, a residential use located next to an asphalt operation and things like that. So it's from a planning perspective, the compatibility is also an important aspect to this.
Right, so as Mr. Leggio pointed, if I could just reiterate what Mr. Leggio said is, this road is already heavily industrial. The problem is, we don't want it to have to be really heavy industrial with the, with the type of properties, with some of the type of properties that are already there. We like them to be a little bit of a softer industrial type of property, and therefore, we're rezoning it as SED Light. So that it makes sure that it doesn't stay that way.
If I may? Yeah. But if you add warehouses, distribution, fulfillment, some of the things that we talked about, this is actually gonna create much more traffic than the asphalt or, or some of the heavy industrial thing. And that's my concern because that can handle that traffic.
Yeah, fulfillments are, are prohibited uses.
Well, warehouses are the same principle where they make their money by taking in freight and then pushing it back out, and every warehouse wants as many possible trucks to be in there. So I don't, I don't know if this is a great area for that.
I don't wanna say anything for the council, but I think that may be why in the last ordinance, we all made a recommendation that that fulfillment needs to be defined. And that's probably a good start for a reason why, Mr. Dorado.
Fulfillment's different than warehouse. Fulfillment actually takes in a product, and that's Amazon. Warehouse is they lease spaces to other people, and other people have their products in there, whether they're industrial or whatever, and then they ship them in and out. Raw materials could be stored there. I mean, I deal with them on a daily basis. Just because it's not fulfillment, warehouse is the same thing. It's as many trucks on that road. If you have a lot of trucks on that road, which definitely can't handle it, because Route thirty three there is a little just nightmare, you're going to have a bigger problem than you do now.
Well, and that's why the definition is important, because at the end of the day, you know, a warehouse is what it's going to be defined as. A fulfillment center is what it is going to be defined as, and it's in our recommendation is that it it should not be based upon, you know, what we believe the use is to be. It is, they will define what the use is, and then.
Right, and then. And at that council meeting, Mr. Cuchero, is where the public can provide the council that advice and those recommendations to further define those uses.
But, you know, something that's coming up, come up with previous applications and our discussions, especially Paul, from you having some background in logistics. I don't know that the Route thirty three corridor would be an attractive place for a warehouse anyway.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just just another point, because Mr. Leggio made some good points. It's true, Yellowbrook is one of the heaviest traffic roads in Howell Township, which the Voler and all the other operations that are there. But what's what's ironic is, is that this SED light zone now creates warehousing that is less than what's in the SED zones. They're smaller and they're less in size. Clearly, some members aren't just reading or doing their homework to understand what this, what this zone is creating.
Same, whether you got four twenty thousand square foot warehouses or one, it's moved the same amount of trucks. You don't use warehouses, what do you know?
It's 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 less intrusive and they're smaller. The question becomes whether the council decides whether they want any more warehousing or not. That should be the subject, but clearly, this zone is creating less intrusive. Uses that's already existing on Yellowbrook. So, John, you got it right. You got Stravoli, you got L and L, you got all these heavy uses. And if I believe, because I read the master plan examination report, in nineteen seventy, this zone was originally SED industrial use. In nineteen eighties, I believe, and Pete, you could correct me if I'm wrong, it was changed to ARE six. And although we're in twenty twenty, you know, at some point. Whether you think it's too long, or should have happened earlier, whatever, that's not really the issue. The issue is, we're correcting an issue now. So the question becomes, do you want to correct the issue now, or just leave it as it is?
But to to your point, Mr. Castro, my issue would change in the AR six to this LED light. We're setting, you were setting ourselves up for the future for for some bad decisions down the road. This road that's in question could handle this, you know, all weather could handle it or not, you know, we have to listen to some traffic guys, and we need a light on thirty three. There's there's issues over there. A lot of residential with the retirement villages villages that are going up, so I'm sure those people aren't going to be happy with more warehousing or whatever is going to go in. But that's not for us to say or not, okay? But I'm worried about other pieces of property in this town on five forty seven Squonk Road on, you know, out on the back roads, you know, heading into Jackson, that are AR six. Then you're going to hear, here we go, you know, all the warehouses.
That's not fair. That's not fair, Mr. Leggio.
And John, just to your point, see, there's a process, and when the reexamination, when the master plan subcommittee does these reexaminations, there's a process. They look at things individually, and then, you know, the transparency is, that's when these discussions take place. If that was your, if that statement was true, what you're saying, then they would have did other areas, you know, they they look at these areas specifically based on the facts. So can that issue happen down the road? Yes, but there's a process for that. That's not what is that issue at hand now. You don't know, oh, you don't know what future governing bodies and visions are going to be, or future residents visions are going to be, but you're right. Can it happen? Yes, but that's not what's happening now. That's why there is a process, and there's reexaminations take place every ten years or sooner. I understand your point. It's concerning. The hand is, they looked at a specific area now, an area of Yellowbrook that's heavily industrial, and do they want to make it less industrial and make it more suitable what's surrounding it?
But I think one thing we have to be aware of, too, and, you know, Mr. Leggio makes this point, Mr. Dorado does, everybody does. We constantly are talking about warehouses, but there's twenty four, I believe, close to twenty four permitted other uses in the SED light zone. Some of which could be quite desirable, especially to the people local to that, living in the adult communities, to have a new deli or pharmacy, or whatever the business may be. I mean. We're pitching holding it to warehouses, which I realize is is a matter of contention, but I think we also have to look at all the other opportunities as well.
No, we're pitching to the developers that are going to make the most money on whatever's going to go there. People aren't going to build stuff that isn't going to make money for them, and we're and we're not being considerate of, you know, everything that surrounds that area. Have you been over there at rush hour, or even before rush hour? It's the heading out from on to thirty three over there. It's 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 crazy, even Cranberry Road back in the Farmingdale. You know, it's heavily, heavily, you know, run by trucks right now. So here we go, SED light and more tractor trailers. More traffic. So, you know, I don't live over there, so whatever. I don't agree with this, but, you know, you guys could try to convince me, you know, the other way. I'm only one vote, so.
I have a question. Peter, the the farms that are there are not necessarily working farms, as most people, I think, would think of. For instance, I know the one property is a farm, but it's a Christmas tree farm. Can you identify other things that are not necessarily agricultural farm, well, animal husbandry farming? And, you know, it's a business and a farm, you know, farm, a business farm.
Yeah, I mean, you have different uses, like you, like you mentioned, you know, Christmas, Christmas tree farms, you know, animal husbandry. I mean, there's even the full range of agricultural, like, just trying to, trying to think here off the top of my head. You have, you know, the uses that are, I I guess, farms with a farm market, although I think we're getting into a little bit of a different use there.
There's the landscaping I know of, and then you've got a kennel. So, I mean, although it's ARE six, I mean, these are nonconforming at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And with, and I'm sorry, I thought you meant with with respect to alternative.
My point is that the the ARE six, you know, isn't necessarily at this point in time, you know, cows and horses, you know, it's it's a working farm, a business farm. Which we're thankful to have, obviously, because it's a service to the community. So I think it's important to understand what's actually there, along with that. The, I've got a firecracker warehouse at the end there.
Yeah, there's some interesting uses. So there's, there's a variety of commercial uses.
An interesting mix, for sure. So the intent is, we will never have another asphalt plant there, because that's been prohibited in the town. However, we're looking not to have the intent uses that we have now. There'll not be another George Harms facility. There'll not be another. L and L, which was the pipe plant, which was incredibly invasive use, you know, very strong, not invasive, very heavy duty use. So the idea is that the uses would be generally less than. And farms are not being pushed out by any stretch, you know, there, these are working farms, business farms.
Well, well, Deputy Mayor, I mean, agriculture, forestry, and agricultural services is one of the, I mean, is the. One of the allowable principal uses.
Yeah, but my, I get my point is that there's things that are there now, that's not necessarily a simple residence. I mean, this is a street of multifaceted uses. So the idea is to prohibit the very heavy uses that that is there.
So. And fix existing nonconforming uses.
That would be nice, yeah. Yeah, because that's an incredible amount of nonconforming use.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Question is, is this still conforming? Substantially conforming to the master plan? In my opinion, I believe it is, but we'll we'll open it up. If nobody has any other questions, this one I'll open up for the public. Let's hear the public comment, so we can discuss, and at least the public can get our opinions from the planning board, so that when they bring it to the council, I'm assuming anybody in the public that's going to have comment, is going to actually go to the council meeting. At least they'll be maybe better informed, or at least have a better idea of how these things came about. Please. Please state your name and your address. Speak slowly. Make sure that you have your video on as well.
We have Tina Smilik on the line.
Thank you.
I just need to swear you in again, because it's a new matter. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
You're muted.
Yep.
Okay, and just give us your your name and address again.
Tina Smilik, thirty three Charles Street, Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead.
So the current, the current area right now is AR six, correct?
Correct.
Our warehouse is allowed in AR, ARE E six.
No, they're not.
So by moving this to SED light, you're now allowing a use that's higher than what is actually there. You're not actually saving us, you're causing it to be, you're you're allowing more uses to it. Leave it ARE six, and you don't ever have to worry about warehouses or anything going there. And there is qualified farms there. I know Deputy Mayor said there's hardly anything there, like, it doesn't matter what.
I didn't say that. There are qualified farms. I believe the tree farm is qualified, but that the taxation of that property really isn't relevant.
And how many acres is that?
I don't have that map in front of me. Perhaps Peter would have it.
I don't, I don't have acreage by parcel, but the uses that were that are being introduced, there's actually, the asphalt plant is probably one of the most intensive uses.
Okay, but that's not allowed. We've already prohibited that in town. No more allowed. So this isn't going to stop it. We have already stopped it by prohibiting it in town. Did we not?
Yeah, I mean, the point I'm trying to bring out in in response to your your question is that the uses that are being introduced are actually less intense than the existing uses.
No, and ARE six doesn't allow that.
Yeah, but Ms. Smilik, there are existing nonconforming uses that are more more intense, already in those. Okay, do you have any other questions for our professionals? We want to make sure that everybody is properly.
What are we missing here? We are, the town has prohibited both, it has prohibited asphalt and those plants in in all of the town, in any zone. So this isn't prohibiting anything. You're actually making this worse by changing it to an SED. How many people are sitting there on planning board that actually looked at this master plan? How many people are still on planning board that actually voted on it and saw the presentation?
Smilik, these are things that you can bring to the council. I I don't, I don't think that these type of comments and questioning is appropriate for the planning board. We're here to give you information.
How much you know about this property before you vote on it is not.
Ma'am, I don't think that's an appropriate question.
Okay, I'll end it with this. You're moving from ARE six to an SED light. That is going backwards with our master plan. It's going backwards, and you're going to. You're going to hurt this town by putting this through. So any of you planning board members that decide to vote yes on this, just know you are voting yes to send this town down the wrong road.
Ron, can you, can you, again, explain what the planning board's role in this, that we're not introducing an ordinance, we're voting, what we're voting on again?
You're sitting here saying that an ARE six zone, an SED zone, is less than an ARE six zone, and that's not true. Tell the truth. An ARE six zone, leaving it as is, is less invasive to this town than changing it to an SED light zone. Is that not true?
Ron, Ron, and I think our professionals need to provide some comment on that. Do you have any advice on how to respond to that?
Well, I can only tell you, I can only tell you what the jurisdiction of the of the board is. So the task, the statutory task for the board is to review the proposed ordinance and determine whether it is substantially consistent with the master plan.
And notice how my answers aren't getting, my questions aren't getting answered. That's because there is no answer. SED white is ARE six. Leave the area alone. Or, you know what, Mr. Chairman, how about you appoint some people to the master plan committee that hasn't been done all year? No.
By all means, by all means, if someone gives me a budget, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, then let's talk to the council. I'm sure you will have.
Well, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Our master plan needs to be taking precedent here. You guys are taking an ordinance, or, and you're going to pass this ordinance, and it's going to make it worse for every resident in this state, especially in that area.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, first of all, the planning board does not adopt ordinances. Ordinances, the ordinance has been introduced by the governing body, it has not been adopted.
If this planning board denies this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can go on mute if if no one wants to listen to me. You know, if anyone wants to listen, I'll speak, but I'm not going to compete.
Ms. Smilik, how do you want to handle it? Do you want our professionals to tell you what we can and can't do?
Yeah, I'd like to know what can we, how, I want to know how the SED light zone is better than the.
Then you got to give them a couple of minutes to, can you, can you give them a couple of minutes, please?
Absolutely.
It's it's not really a matter of what's better or not better. It's a matter of, is this something that is substantially consistent with the master plan? So when you look at the master plan for this area, you look to see, are these the types of uses that the master plan is is recommending? Is it promoting them, or is it not the type of uses that are being promoted in the master plan? And I'll just, I'll just bring it out again. What the New Jersey Supreme Court said, and it is, again, it's the Manalup and Realt V Township Committee, one forty NJ three sixty six. It's a nineteen ninety five New Jersey Supreme Court case, and it said that what you're looking at is, does the proposed ordinance. Does it not substantially or materially undermine or distort the basic provisions and objectives of the master plan? So you're looking to see whether the proposed ordinance has that effect on the master plan.
What if the planning board disagrees with the master plan? Can they ask to review the master plan, or they don't have that choice?
The master plan is the planning board's document. It's not the governing body's document.
Planning board now.
Ms. Smilik, I'm trying to answer your questions. So you make statements, and some of them are not exactly accurate. I'm trying to, you know, place them in their proper context, and we can have a discussion about it, but I need to be able to do that. So the master plan, under the municipal land use law, is exclusively within the jurisdiction of the planning board. So it it is the planning, it is the planning board's document. So the planning board, when it adopted it, absolutely agreed with it, and that's also why you have the periodic reexaminations of the master plan. You know, to make recommendations as to whether the master plan is still viable, you know, still still current. So if the board wants to change the master plan, and if it has the budget to do so, you know, it can engage in that process, but it's not the governing body's document. It's the planning board's document, and that's why there's the referral, because it's the planning board's document.
Okay, so now can the planning board request that they review the master plan again on this area? Because they don't agree with the master plan. I mean, what what happens when the planning board doesn't agree with the master plan?
Well, I don't understand, like, the master plan has multiple elements to it. So disagreeing with the master plan is a very general statement. If there's a provision of the master plan, a particular section of the master plan. That the planning board, you know, wants to amend, it certainly has the jurisdiction, doesn't it? Except for, you know, the budget to do it, it doesn't need anybody's permission. It can, it can undertake that process itself.
So tonight, the map, the planning board can request for this ordinance to be reviewed in the master plan before they vote.
I don't understand what that means.
Like, can the planning board ask to review this, what this ordinance, this part of the master plan that covers this ordinance? Like, can, can the planning board ask to review this, what this ordinance, this part of the master plan that covers this ordinance? Can they ask to review this? And if they wanna make changes to the master plan now, would they be able to?
Well, we only have a specific amount of time to make a, to take an action after the ordinance is referred to us. And if we don't take any action, then, you know, we.
So if we disagree with this, we still have to go because we're forced now because they, the, the, wait, we're forced to make a decision right now because council introduced this.
Well, we're forced, we are given a timeframe by the municipal land use law, you know, to review an ordinance.
So, and if they don't decide to, to do this today, would they just have to reintroduce the ordinance at a later time?
No, they don't. If, if we don't do anything, then the governing body doesn't have to take what we say into account at all because we didn't say anything. Once that time period passes, you know, there's, there's nothing that, uh, that this board can do.
So everybody says here, let's let the council make the decision on this and let's let the community talk to the council and write this out. How about the planning board right now, take a stand and say, we're not gonna vote on this, we're gonna leave this in council's hands. If council wants to do this, it's without our blessing.
The municipal, the municipal land use law doesn't, it, it, the municipal land use law wants this board to, to make a decision. It just is not gonna wait forever. So what you're suggesting is inconsistent with the statutory scheme. That's what the legislature has put together, not, not the governing body. I can't recommend as a legal matter that this board not review something and purposefully, you know, let the time elapse.
Well, actually you are because they're not allowed to review it now. You're asking them to vote on something that none of them has even looked at or even had.
That's not true.
Ms. Smilik, Ms. Smilik, I, I don't appreciate you making an insinuation and no one understands the master plan or understands, uh, how, how this planning board operates.
Okay.
That's.
I respect that. I was at the master plan meeting. I was actually there that night when you presented this master plan. And I was there and it, there seemed to be a lot of questions and it just came, there was a lot of people absent too. I think you had just had a quorum that night and it was one no and the rest were yes. If I recall myself correctly. And you know what? Half the people sitting in that room right now wasn't, weren't there to see the presentation. I'm just wondering how many of them actually went back and looked at this presentation of what the master plan changes were back in 2019.
Well, it doesn't matter like the master plan changes were. It matters what the master plan is. So you look at what the master plan is and it either is, in your opinion, substantially consistent or it is not. So, I mean, you're just looking at the plain language that exists in the document.
What does a planning board member that disagrees with this do at this time? If a planning board member disagrees with changing an A R E six zone to a worse zone of a, of a S E D light, what does a planning board member do if they don't agree with the master plan?
Planning board, well, by direction to the planning board members with regard to anything is that you follow the municipal land use law and the, you follow your oath, which is to follow the municipal land use law. So.
And, and, and the constitution as well, Ron.
Right, well, I mean, but the municipal land use law has the specifics as to, to what your role is. And so I would say, look, you, you, your role is to determine substantial consistency. If you can, if you wanna make a comment above and beyond that, that you would recommend that the board, the governing body reconsider, you can certainly do that, but your primary function in, you know, you can't just determine you're not gonna, you're, you're not gonna undertake what the function is, is to determine substantial consistency.
Is, is it fair to say that it's similar to, to acting like a judge? We, we have, we have rules that we have to abide by and that's the municipal land use law.
What's not fair?
You can make whatever analogy you want. I just look at it as you're on a board. The board is not, doesn't have the freedom to do whatever it wants. You know, the governing body doesn't even have the ability to adopt ordinances.
If the board doesn't have, if the board doesn't have the option to do what it wants, then what's the point of the board? I mean, could it just, any person come here and interpret the law and then that's it? Basically, all they need is you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Again. So, let me, let me, let me just explain to you what, what judges look at when they're reviewing actions of boards. Boards get reversed when they act in a manner which is, quote, arbitrary, unreasonable and capricious. If I were to define what, when the courts define what arbitrary and reasonable capricious is, it's, you do whatever you want despite what the law says. So, I mean, if that's the way you want your board to operate, you're free to do it, I suppose. But when you lose in court and you lose every single time because you've made a determination that on a case by case basis, you will apply whatever rules you think are appropriate in that instance, rather than applying the statutory standards which have been adopted by the New Jersey Assembly, the New Jersey Senate and signed by the governor, you're well beyond and a court could actually remove you as a planning board member because you've actually said to the court, I refuse to comply with my oath of office.
Thank you.
So the oath of office says that you're not allowed to have your own opinion on it. You just have to follow whatever's there.
You have to follow the law, yes. Your oath of office says that you have to follow the law. So that, I would agree with you, Ms. Smilik.
Ms. Smilik, do you have any other questions or comments that we could share with our professionals?
I would ask that the planning board just ask to reexamine this master plan and not be comfortable with settling now. If we push this back a month or two and have it reintroduced, it's no big deal. If it's meant to be, then every planning board member in there should be okay with pushing it off a month or two to read, just to see that A R E, moving an A R E six zone to an S E D one light zone was not incorrect back in the last planning, back in 2019 with, which, uh, the master plan committees consisted of three people.
And we, we will, we will take that into our.
And it was reviewed by the whole, it was reviewed by the whole planning board. There was a herring at the planning board.
Yes, and only five people showed up. It wasn't even everybody there.
It gets voted by the whole planning board.
It, it wasn't the whole planning board. There was five people there and at that night, it was right after we got done with the warehouse presentation for Randolph Road. So it was really.
Happened to be one of the busiest meetings in, in the town.
And most people left because they didn't know.
Ms. Ms. Nick Cash, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Ms. Smilik has, has said what she wants. We've taken her, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
Yes, I have two others. One moment.
Thank you.
Are, are they, are they here, Eileen?
Yeah, we have Joan Osborne, but I don't see her. I promoted her. There she is.
Okay, let me just swear you in again. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
You're muted, Ms. Osborne.
Is it working now? Okay. Yes, I, I do swear and affirm.
All right, so just, uh, state and spell your name for the record.
Joan Osborne, O S B O R N E. I just had a couple of quick points I wanted to, to address with regard to the change. It's my understanding, based on what I've been hearing, that the planning board is being asked to determine if the zone, if this new zone is consistent with the intent of the master plan. The master plan currently has this area listed as an A R A, A R E six zone, uh, which allows for certain uses. The testimony in the comments that occurred from the various members and from the professionals is that it would be consistent with the master plan to create this new zone for this area. But, um, the problem I'm having with it is, the testimony is that it's consistent because of existing non-conforming uses rather than it's consistent with the master plan intent, uh, which has a different set of uses for that area. So now you're trying to basically say, well, because all these other things are there, then it would be okay to change this and make it consistent with these non-conforming uses. And you're looking at two different things. You know, if you wanna say it's consistent with the master plan, you should be referring to the master plan and the, the uses that are permitted and that would be permitted under this new zone rather than pointing at the existing uses. Because hopefully, I mean, I think the intent is that those non-conforming uses would eventually disappear. Not to say, okay, let's, let's meet those uses and intensify these so that it's consistent with this, uh, change that we're making. The other issues that I have is that you are, you need to consider what's already been approved in the area for that location. You've got a bunch of senior housing developments. I think 300 units are being built across Route 33. You're going to have a bunch, a lot more traffic because of that. You, you have, uh, a lot of traffic on Route 33 as it is. We have warehouses that are being proposed and I believe only two weeks ago approved by the Board of Adjustment for Fairfield Road near Route 33. Um, it's gonna have 78 loading bays. You have no ability, once the zone is created, to look at the traffic impacts except for onsite traffic of a proposed development. So when, when you include in this new S E D light zone, the ability to have a warehouse, you're, you're gonna be throwing a bunch of traffic onto our roads and you will not be able to say, we cannot approve this use because it's consistent with the zone we created. So you're kind of tying your hands by allowing the word warehouse to be in this ordinance. You're tying your hands and you're gonna be, you're not gonna be able to say no to anybody who comes in an S E D light zone and says, I wanna do a warehouse. And if you wanna have a semantic question about, oh, is it a fulfillment center or is it a warehouse? You know, there's gonna be a lot of litigation about what is what and there's not gonna be enough of a difference for it to really be a valid distinction that would allow you to hang your hat and say, no, we, we're gonna have to deny this application because it's a fulfillment center versus it's a warehouse. So, you know, I just wish that you would really be mindful of the potential traffic impacts that you're not going to have any ability to do anything about if you leave the word warehouse in this permitted zone.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a question.
Yes.
If, if the governing body decided that they wanted to remove this specific use, because all I keep hearing is warehousing, warehousing. If the governing body decided that they wanted to remove warehousing out of the S E D light, does that fall under their, you know, their jurisdiction, their right to do?
Yes.
So if the people go to the governing body and say the concern is warehousing and S E D light, they could literally remove that use from that permit, you know, that permitted use in that zone. And it has no bearing on us finding it consistent with the master plans. Two different, it's apples and oranges, correct?
Yeah, just because something is substantially, finding that it is substantially consistent is not, you know, tantamount to it being approved. It's just, it gets you to the public hearing and the governing body will make that decision. So finding that it is substantially consistent doesn't prohibit the governing body from, you know, amending that ordinance to remove warehouses at permitted use.
Correct. And, and one of the reasons why the planning board has a class one and a class three, two members of the governing body, is that they could hear these types of concerns and bring it back to the governing body as a whole and they could make that determination at that time, correct?
Yeah, there's a, the municipal land use law contemplates, you know, a, a synergy between the governing body and, and the planning board. And, you know, in our form of government, we're actually just one council member short of a quorum here on the, uh, on the planning board.
If I, if I might, I, there must be, and Mr. Clutiero, you can tell me, there must be some impact for having the planning board render the decision that it is not in substantial.
Yeah, I, I discussed that. I discussed it earlier. The voting requirement is different. So if you find that something is substantially consistent, then it's just a simple majority to adopt an ordinance. If you find that something is not substantially consistent, then it's, they need a full, a, a majority of the full authorized membership, which is three. So for instance, if you only had three that come to a meeting, which is a quorum, you would need all three to vote yes. If, um, you know, there was a determination that it was not substantially consistent. As opposed to if you did vote it was substantially consistent, you would need two of the three.
So I would suggest to you then that, you know, given that it does include the word warehouse as currently posed, that I don't see how you can vote that it is substantially consistent with the intent of the zoning, which currently doesn't allow for it.
The intent of the master plan, not the zone.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Ms. Osborne, uh, thank you. Do you have any further comment?
Nothing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eileen?
Yes, I have.
Please. Tell us who else we have on, from the public.
I have someone that just has their initials S S H. I just brought them into the meeting.
Please state your name and your address.
Okay, just a second. I'm just trying to get the video up here. Um, I don't know why it's not starting the video for me. For some reason, it's saying my camera's powered on, not powered on. Um, I don't know.
Well, before you start, we have to swear you in and I'm not sure that based upon the, the state's latest guidelines on, on these type of public formats on electronic, on the electronic side, you have to have video. Is that a fair statement?
The, uh, there's some sloppiness to how the emergency regulations have been drafted and it's being addressed in the, uh, public hearing process for the permanent rule adoption. The way the emergency rules were adopted, it really, it addressed developers who were providing sworn testimony and it, it, it treated members of the public who were going to comment or, or ask questions differently. So there's some flexibility for members of the public versus developers. So I think, you know, for, for this.
We don't have video for this. We'd be okay considering that she tried and it just wasn't able to work.
The, the language as it currently exists, I think, can allow for this.
Okay, let's please swear, swear her in. Thank you.
Well, I just connected.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
They're muted.
I do. I just connected through my phone, which might be able to give the video.
All right, we'll give you a few moments.
All right. So I raised my hand.
You're Sheila H?
I am.
All right, hold on. I have to bring you into the meeting because you're logged in separately that way. There you go.
Okay, so let's do this again. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
The, the audio's off on the, on that phone connection.
Hold on. You're you. Sheila, we have no voice from you. We need some. We need some.
Yes, you're, okay, so if I, if you get my, okay, you can get my video through the phone and the audio through the computer.
Okay, we have.
All right, so let's swear you in. Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Uh, my name is Sheila Hatami, H A T A M I, and I'm here representing my parents, Anne and Siavash Hatami, and also Seaacom LLC, which is run by my father. They reside at 37 Yellowbrook Road. We also own 20 Yellowbrook Road, 28 Yellowbrook Road, and 6 Yellowbrook Road. My parents moved here in 1974. They have been on this road since 1974. At that time, my father moved here, started his landscaping business and, you know, we have purchased property along the way. We are one of the working farms on the road. There are several working farms on the road. And what we're talking about rezoning here is not the industrial area, but the agricultural area. And so our position is that this ordinance as written is not substantially consistent with the master plan and instead substantially and materially undermines and distorts the basic objectives of the master plan. It does not retain open space or appropriate development. We're going from AREE 6, which is six acre subdivisions, to, uh, two, under two acre subdivisions with 70% lot coverage. There are 13 property owners in the zone. We, of course, own several parcels. We did not have any opportunity to participate in the planning process with regard to this zone even as a courtesy until, of course, it was introduced to the council. This is a heavy intensification of the use. It does not comport with the master plan because Howell has chosen residences and residential uses in the area. It abuts the R3 zone. Equestria runs the length of the properties in back of Block 177 out to Cranberry Road. The planning board has approved, this board has approved 70-plus residences to be, uh, used for the property at the end of Yellowbrook Road and 524. There's the K-Hub development, Uproute 33 with 100 plus units, and the Toll Brothers Development with another 100 plus units, all age restricted homes. You have a lot of elderly and seniors using these roads. The ordinance is not narrowly tailored to comport with the character of the area and the goals of the master plan. And Deputy Mayor O'Donnell said that there are multifaceted uses along this particular parcel or proposed zone. It has residences, small businesses, landscapers, a tree removal company, and several farms. The proposed zone does not include the fireworks manufacturer, as someone previously stated. The ordinance as proposed, the SED light zone, does not include landscaping businesses and trade contractors. One of the individuals in the zone has gone before the zoning board to seek a variance and he will not get relief from the change in zone. Also, we'd like to see some multi-uses on these large parcels. Most of the parcels are over 10 acres, some are 20. I would like to see some multi, multiple uses being permitted on these parcels. Right now, as it stands, if this is rezoned SED light, all of the residences there will not be in conformity with the zone. And for that reason, we'd like to see an overlay in this area. In the master plan and the land use amendment, it says that the SED light zone along Yellowbrook Road will quote, "remove residentially zoned properties that are being impacted by surrounding industrial uses." But as I stated previously, this abuts an R3 zone and Equestria. These residences are not being removed or included in the industrial zone. As one of the board members stated, there's insufficient infrastructure. I don't know why or if Howell has ever examined a direct route along the railroad tracks into the industrial zone, there's no direct route into the industrial zone here. It would have to go through a residential area. And that, trucks can't get in and out efficiently and that problem really needs to be addressed. And as I stated, there's a lot of elderly and, uh, older folks driving these roads. The trucks are very difficult to, to navigate with them on the roads. Also, some trucks and some traffic goes out to the light at Colts Neck Road. There's sufficient backup along Route 33. Oftentimes, I'm getting in there and, uh, the, the traffic from that light is backed up past Yellowbrook. If there is more traffic in and out of there, there's going to be significantly more backup. There are still vacant lots in the SED zone. Howell should encourage that build out first in accordance with the master plan. And the light zone doesn't specifically exclude uses permitted in the SED zone. For example, it doesn't state that it doesn't permit construction uses or explosives manufacturing, the, as, as I think the attorney stated, the definitions could be fleshed out and should be fleshed out for the zone. The final item that I think is not in compliance with the master plan, again, this is an agricultural zone with a lot of buffers between the properties and this zone should look at appropriate buffers and setbacks for the uses proposed. So I would recommend that the, the planning board find that the, the ordinance as drafted is not substantially compliant and substantially consistent with the master plan.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning board members may have about the uses in the zone. Like I said, we've been there a long time.
Mr. Castro, you look like you got a question? Does anybody have any questions? Do any of our professionals want to address any of the concerns of the citizen?
I mean, if I could, I could respond, there was a, there was multiple, multiple points there though. So I don't know, I probably need something in, in writing to really provide a comprehensive response, but, um, there is a 50-foot perimeter that would be required for any use, I believe it's over, over an acre, any commercial use. I mean, a lot of it, I'd be reiterating a lot of the testimony that they already put on, but essentially, you know, we're trying to create a, I guess, the ordinance is essentially designed to create a, a district that is less intensive than the most intensive in that zone. There's close proximity to Route 33 and there's a, would also establish a gradient of, of uses from the existing SED toward Route 33. Beyond that, I mean, I would need to review something to respond to a lot of the specific points.
Well, Peter, I think there's one overriding point and the one point that I think is the most relevant to this board and the point that we started with. I mean, you heard the, the comments from the members of the public. Does it change your opinion that the master plan is substantially consistent, or that the proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan? Is your opinion changed by anything that you have heard?
It, it is not, the, yeah, the, the proposed rezoning remains substantially consistent with the master plan. It is reflected in both the 2019 reexamination report and the 2019 land use plan element.
So let's just talk about that then for a second because the, the statements were that this is not found anywhere in the master plan. Excuse me. You're saying that it's in the land use element. So can you call out for us where in the land use element this is?
This ordinance, the recommendations, the actual block amounts and the same, the same rezon recommendation that is in the ordinance before us is referenced on page 52 of the master plan reexamination report and pages 21 and 22 of the land use plan amendment.
All right, so the land use plan element, which is an element of our municipal master plan, on the pages that you referenced, you're, you're telling us those pages specifically recommend the proposed uses that are contained in the proposed resolution.
They, they recommend the rezoning of the lots under consideration of this ordinance into the SED light zone. And the uses are also, also referenced in the master plan as stated previously tonight in testimony for previous ordinance. They are denoted on pages 44 and 46 of the master plan reexamination and pages 13 through 16 of the land use plan.
All right, so then just so that I'm clear, and I think it would help the board and members of the public, the current land use element of the master plan calls out these specific lots for rezoning to SED light. And further, the land use element on the pages that you have referenced lists the specific permitted uses that are part of this ordinance.
Yes, the 2019 land use plan amendment references both these uses and these lots on the page.
And that, you know, that forms the basis, I assume, of your testimony tonight that it, the proposed ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan.
That's correct.
All right.
Now, as you stated though, Mr. Cucero, the definitions in the proposed ordinance are, they're not, they don't exist, as far as we know.
I'm just asking Mr. Vandenkoy how he was supporting his decision or his recommendation and that, and this is his testimony. That was my only purpose. I'm not making any findings myself. I was just asking and helping Mr. Vandenkoy to, to more explicitly support his recommendation.
Then if I may ask Mr. Vandenkoy, then there are recommendations in the master plan and the land use ordinance that were, and in the land use amendment that were not included in the ordinance, correct?
That's correct. These ordinances are relatively narrow in scope.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last bit.
These ordinances are relatively narrow in scope. They, they focus on specific recommendations from the 2019 master plan reexamination and the 2019 land use plan element amendment.
And there were specific recommendations, but not all of those uses were included in these particular ordinances, right?
Um, the, the recommend, the ordinances before the board tonight reflect the specific uses recommended in those documents and the, the reexamination and the land use plan amendment.
There, there's no, there's no inclusion for landscaping business, right? And that was in the master plan?
It was, and it has a different recommendation in a different subsection. That's correct though.
You're, you're saying it wasn't under SED light?
No, there was landscaping businesses were addressed in the, the master plan reexamination report, but they are not listed as a principal permitted use in the, the SED light district ordinance that was before the board tonight.
They are listed as a conditional, they were proposed as a conditional use in the master plan and the land use amendment, but not in the ordinance?
That is correct. On page 45, they were, they were proposed as a conditional use and, but in the ordinance tonight, they're, they're not included as a proposed conditional use.
And, and the same thing is true as far as trade contractor businesses?
That's correct.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, just as an aside, it's, you know, flex space is in, in high demand and that's one of the reasons why we're, we're encouraging that this ordinance go back and, and be redrafted and really look at, look at the properties in the zone and come up with something that's narrowly tailored for flex space for the multiple uses, for really being able to develop the area in a, in a responsible way. So again, recommend that the board suggest it's not substantially compliant to the council. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public?
I don't see anyone else, but just give me one second. Oh, yes, I do have one more person with their hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Parisi.
Hey, Mr. Parisi, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Mark Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I, Two Castle Port. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for, you know, allowing public comment on this particular ordinance tonight. It's been some interesting conversation. I really couldn't say it better than what Joan Osborne and Sheila Hatami have said, but I, I did have some, some questions and I, I went and I looked at, at the master plan. And under the original master plan that was adopted by the planning board in December of 1994, the, the land use plan goals were enumerated, there are six of them. I just wanted to read them for the planning board as you deliberate on this ordinance tonight. Number one was to protect the township's remaining rural areas from suburban sprawl. Number two, protect the rural character of areas outside of centers. Number three, protect residential areas from incompatible, non-residential development. Number four, upgrade the township standards for street tree plantings and onsite landscaping. Number five, encourage the preservation of agricultural and farmland within the township. And number six, use cluster development in a manner to best serve the township. It goes on to, a little bit later on, under the economic plan, it, number one is maintain the township's commercial industrial tax base, which contributes 13% of each tax dollar to the township. So, so I, I had a couple of questions and comments. Number one, talking about the tax base, I was wondering if the planner, if anybody, any of the professionals could just discuss what the commercial tax base is right now? If we have, are maintaining that, the 13% as articulated in the master plan itself and with all of the additional commercial development that's going on in Howell, whether or not there's a need to rezone this, these parcels to SED light for additional commercial tax base?
Mr. Chair, whether there's a need to rezone or not, that's not really the issue for the planning board. It is an issue for the governing body, you know, and that's certainly something that can be discussed at the public hearing whenever that's scheduled, but we're just looking at, does the master plan, is this substantially consistent with the master plan, not whether it's needed or, or not needed?
Okay, well, I, yeah, it, so as far as consistency with the master plan, is this, rezoning of this property, is this going to provide, benefit the, the commercial tax base? Is there, is, can there, can there, can you comment on that at all or is that not necessarily an issue of consistency?
I don't find the economics of it to be an issue of consistency. We're looking at the plain language of, of the master plan and is it substantially consistent with the plain language? Not whether it's needed, not what, you know, tax revenue it's going to bring is not what, you know, tax revenue it's going to bring, is, is it something that, you know, was contemplated by the master plan?
Okay, so then getting back to the original six points that I mentioned, when it talks about protect residential areas from incompatible non-residential development. I'd just like to read to, to the planning board and into the record what the, our township's ordinance is defined as agricultural rural estate zones. Purpose, the purpose of the AREE one, AREE three, AREE four and AREE six zones is to minimize the impacts of development in areas located outside of the centers identified in the township's master plan. The goals include preservation of rural and agricultural uses and preservation of rural character. Many areas include significant environmental constraints, including wetlands, floodplains, rare and endangered species habitats, offer recharge areas and high quality watersheds. So at some point, maybe the planner could ask, answer this question. Do you know, you know, I know that in the past, you know, going back maybe some fifty years ago or longer, that this area was zoned for industrial uses. And then at some point thereafter, there was a decision made by this planning board and the governing body to rezone certain areas to AREE six as I just read what the definition of AREE six is. So, and, and now there's a move to, excuse me, to move back more towards industrial. My question is, do you know if the, the rezoning of these properties to, to AREE six occurred before or after the master plan in December of nineteen ninety-four?
Um, I, I don't have the, the exact dates in, in front of me.
But Mr. Chairman, the, the history is, is not what the board's being asked to do here by the statute. So we're asked to look at this master plan that exists currently right now. And is this proposed ordinance, is it substantially consistent with this master plan? So.
And these, these, is it fair for me to say that these type of questions and comments are better suited to be brought to the council?
I, I think, yeah, I'm not saying that they're irrelevant as, as a matter of law, period. I'm saying that they, we have a very narrow scope that the municipal land use law gives us. I think those are all relevant questions, you know, even going back to your question regarding is, you know, is this, is this needed, you know, tho- those are certainly questions and comments and, and discourse that you can have at the council level. We're just, you know, we have a very narrow lane here.
Right.
Okay, so, a, a, and I, I appreciate, you know, your, your, your comment there. We, we know that right now, these, these parcels are zoned for AREE six. We know that AREE six is defined as preserving of rural and agricultural uses. We know that the master plan from nineteen ninety-four clearly states that one of its land use plan goals is to protect residential areas from incompatible non-residential development. What this ordinance is doing is changing this AREE six zone to an industrial use, which seems to be inconsistent with the goal of AREE six and the master plan from nineteen ninety-four. You know, and, and, and I would just, you know, implore the planning boards to, you know, think about the fact that with the, there's mixed uses up there already. We, we recognize that. We've talked about that tonight. We don't need to, you know, rehash that any further. But if a residential property owner who's living up there right now intends to stay there because they've been there for several decades, their property is now going to be rezoned to a, an industrial use as defined in SED light. They basically have a choice to either continue to live as a non-conforming residential use or to sell their property and get out. Wouldn't it just make more sense to leave everything AR six? And if somebody wants to get, go to the zoning board to get a variance.
Hey, Mr. Parisi, this is again, this is council, you know, appropriate, but not, not for what we're here to do tonight.
Okay, I appreciate it. Well, then I, I've, I've said what I have to say. I, I thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else?
I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, alright, we'll close the public portion of this ordinance. And if anybody else on the board has any further comments, I'll take a motion to determine if this ordinance is substantially consistent with the master plan.
In an effort to expedite this, to get this to council and to flush out all things, I will make that motion.
That, that it is substantially consistent.
Substantially consistent, yes.
We'll have a second. Second? Mr. Picharo, am I allowed to make a second as the chairman?
Yes.
Then I'll make the second.
Ready for roll call? Mr. Dorado?
No.
Mr. Husser?
I don't want to go through my five pages of notes here, but I will be brief. In my narrow lane, quote unquote. I, I can't, I cannot say with a straight face that this is substantially consistent, master plan. So I am voting no.
Mr. Leggio?
No.
Mr. Nacastro?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. I, I, I still have some questions for Peter. Pete, there was some, there was some questions that arose to nineteen ninety-four. The original master plan, and as we know that there are constantly reexamines of, reexamine of master plans, which kind of evolved into, you know, future things and happening, so. I can appreciate what was said in nineteen ninety-four, but there's been how many reexaminations since nineteen ninety-four that kind of changed the landscape of the town with the direction as leaders have envisioned? Can, can you, can you talk a little bit about what process went into this specific zone as to make it more in line with what's there? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I believe so, yeah. So essentially what we did at the master plan subcommittee level is we, we looked at the overall context of this area in terms of its proximity to Route thirty-three, for example, the, the land uses that are existing. And, you know, we actually literally looked at the, the composition of the land uses in terms of residential and non-residential, the land area and all those different things. And, you know, we also looked at the, the essential, the evolution of that area, which, you know, some things have changed, but not a whole lot. As we stated previously, you know, some of those, those more intensive uses have been there for a long time. There's been an opportunity for residential development for quite a long time as well, since the nineteen nineties. Before that, it was industrial. No residential development of any, you know, substantial nature has occurred there in the past twenty-five years or so. The character of the area is, is non-residential. It's, it's essentially a light industrial area in terms of the existing uses, and it's got some operating farms. It's mostly a non-residential area. So all those things were factored in and, you know, given those things from a land use perspective, given that locating at other later intensity, non-residential uses close to the more intensive ones that are existing is more compatible than locating single-family homes next to, next to more intensive industrial uses. Factoring all those types of, and planning principles in, it was determined that on balance, it, it does make more sense to recommend it as a, as a non-residential zone. And that's really, you know, some of the key points that the thinking that occurred as part of the, the recommendation.
And did that part of recommendation take into account what future, what, what other zones were, were zoned? For example, up Route thirty-three, the, the senior housing, you know, that's coming into play?
Yeah, um, no, it, it did. I, you know, I mean, there's, you know, we looked at the, the entire area and there is, the military base isn't far from there. It's, it's within, within, you know, three thousand feet of, of the military base as another regional land use consideration. There's a, a lot of different thought that went into it, but overall, the, the recommendation, I, it's my opinion that it's, it's more compatible. It is, it's entirely compatible with the uses that are within that zone. And to, I think more so than it would be if it was single-family residential within that zone, given the, the nature of the intent, intensive industrial uses there.
Okay. In my limited capacity, I'm voting yes, it's substantial. I would just say on the record that I think some recommendations that come out of this meeting tonight should be considered by the council. And that's their role as a planning board member. I know my role, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Mr. Seaman?
I'm, I'm kind of going to echo Mr. Nacastro's thoughts, but I would like Ron to clarify something for me from a procedural standpoint. Us deeming it substantially consistent with the master plan is what gives the council the ability to hear it and to adjust. Is that fair to say?
No, the council gets to hear it no matter what your vote is. It's just that the voting requirement would be different. So let's assume you vote that it's not substantially consistent. The council still gets to have a hearing. It has to have, it is scheduled to hearing. It's just that now it requires the affirmative vote of a majority of the, of the full authorized membership. So three votes, no matter how many people are there. If you vote that it is substantially consistent, the board, the council will still have their hearing. It's just now it's a simple majority of the quorum that's present. Also, if you vote it's not substantially consistent, not only is there the voting requirement, but the town council is also required to adopt a resolution explaining why it's adopting an ordinance that the planning board found to be substantially inconsistent. But they will have a hearing no matter what the vote is, or if there's no vote, you know, of, of the planning, of the planning board.
Okay, so our vote really, it, it makes passing it a little bit more difficult, requires them to do a few other things, but it doesn't prohibit the hearing.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Alright, then in that case, I am, I'm going to vote no because I think there needs to be some serious revisions and I'm not entirely comfortable voting yes at this point.
Okay, Mr. Everett?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to interject one, one additional point. This was also included in the twenty fourteen land use plan element, this recommendation. So I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Uh, yes.
And Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
We have three yeses and five, four, five nos. So it, motion fails.
I don't know about you, but two and a half hours, I'm taking a potty break. So we're gonna, we're gonna take five minutes here and we'll get to some applications. Everybody, please, it's nine twenty-eight now. Please be back here by nine thirty-two.
Can we, Brian?
Yeah.
Can we make it ten minutes? I got a, I got a nomination too that has to take a potty break, so.
Very good. That's fine.
The planning board will now take a recess. We'll be back at nine thirty-eight. Yes, the planning board will now reconvene.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Alright, first up is a resolution for case number SP dash one zero seven seven. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hussey, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Everett and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Who made the motion?
I think there was like three of us. I, I made the motion.
And who was the second?
I seconded.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, we have a submission waiver up, case number SD dash two nine nine one. Minor subdivision with ancillary bulk variances.
Uh, let me see who that is.
We have counsel, who's counsel for that?
That is Mr. Pape. I'm going to bring him.
I think Jared tonight rather than Ken. Yep, there he is.
Mr. Pape, do I need to bring anyone else into the meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chikotano is on the line, but he, he does need to be brought in. He's, he's just observing. You're able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jared Pape with the law firm of High Auburn Pape. On behalf of Mark Chikotano, the applicant. This is a submission waiver. I'll be quite brief. We received and reviewed Ms. Newman's letter dated October twenty twenty twenty. On page three, she lists eighteen checklist items. And just like to state that the applicant would like to withdraw the submission waiver requests, all of them with the exceptions of A, B, C, D, E, N as in Nancy, and P. All others would be withdrawn. So with, I'll defer to Ms. Newman, but that's all, all we have.
Hey, Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So just to clarify, Mr. Pape, you're going to submit these items and then would be deemed complete, or you, that's the plan, correct?
Correct. We would, the, the items that we're withdrawing would be revised to be included on the plan.
Okay, so.
Except for those ones you mentioned, except for the items that I had mentioned.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, with that, I am comfortable. I had the opportunity to review some of these with Mr. Pape's office in advance. And I just feel like some of the flat details should be provided. It is a minor subdivision with no improvements, but I did think that was important. So with the items that are going to be provided, I take no exception to the granting of the waivers as requested, which specifically were A through E, N and P as listed in my report for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Thank you. Can you just explain why you think the typography in item N is not required? That just because that would be something to be brought up during an actual fit out of the site?
That's correct, Mr. Tannenhaus. There's no improvements proposed. So certainly in order to, if the board were to act favorably and they submitted for a plot plan, those details would be reviewed in-house, but this is a minor subdivision with no improvements proposed.
Mr. Chair, also, I just, I just want to be clear that, and it's in all the resolutions. When the board grants submission waivers, it's only for purposes of being declared complete. If the board finds that that information is necessary during the hearing process, it always reserves the right to ask for it.
Thank you. You just took the words out of my mouth. Mr. Pape, you recognize that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, does that, that conclude your testimony?
It does.
Okay, does anybody from the board have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead. Mr. Dorado, did you have a question?
No, no, I just looked at the paperwork on it on my phone, so I, I will make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have a second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Oh, yes.
And Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Very well.
Very well.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is case number SP-1006. Gill Petroleum, visual use, preliminary and final major site plan.
Eileen, I'm recusing myself. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night, Rob.
Good night.
Okay.
We still have a quorum, right?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Alfieri, do you need anyone else brought into the hearing?
Yes, we do. We have two witnesses. We have Richard Simon and Justin Alciello.
Okay. Give me one minute. Okay.
You see them? They're there, Eileen?
I don't see Rich, but I'm asking him to start his video now and he should be. Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. Believe it or not, uh, well, first, a couple of preliminary things. First of all, Ron Gazarovski was a, was previously representing the gas station uh, two hour north. The last hearing, um, his client has agreed to withdraw its objection, so unless Mr. Gazarovski's on screen, uh, which that would, that he will not be appearing to object. Uh, second, the, uh, during the course of the many meetings that we testified, additional questions came up about the environmental condition of the property and the board had requested that Mr. Simon come back to the board to testify on some lingering questions. So, um, we have Mr. Simon, um, from Parsons back. He's our LSRP, or the BP, actually. And we're going to call him as our first witness to just address four questions that came up. Um, and then of course, any questions the board or the public may have.
Hey, Mr. Simon, do you swear? We just need John. Right. You swear or affirm the testimony you about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state and spell your name for the record.
Uh, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-I-M-U-N.
And, and Mr. Simon, in reviewing my preparation for this meeting, I realized that you last testified almost two years ago in January of 2019, so just to refresh the board's recollection, can you advise the board as to what your connection is to this property and the environmental issues that relate to the property?
Okay. Uh, I'm an LSRP, which is a licensed site remediation professional. I represent the responsible party for the site, which is BP Petroleum. So the, uh, the site was a subject of a ground stewardage case, uh, which was the subject of, uh, ongoing remediation. So, uh, as of the last time, uh, we met, uh, or the last time I had a board meeting in 2019, since that time, we have submitted a remediation permit application to NJDEP, which is basically, uh, one of the final steps in securing DEPs of a long-term monitoring plan for a monitored natural attenuation remedy to address the, uh, the residual groundwater impacts at the site. Uh, so that application was officially submitted to NJDEP with a check back in August of 2020. And, uh, we are currently awaiting NJDEP approval of that permit.
And can you just explain to the board, if that permit is granted, what would happen next on site?
Uh, we.
Environment?
Uh, we would transition into a, a bio-sampling program, uh, where we have a predicted timeframe where the, uh, the remaining plume to degrade approximately the next 10 years. So the, uh, the CEA will, is set to expire in 2020, 30. So every two years, we will be out there collecting groundwater samples, uh, in accordance with the NJDEP approved permit, to comment that monitored natural attenuation is still sufficient in the residual contamination and that, uh, in the 2030 timeframe, uh, we will attain groundwater and, I think there are no more, no more ground restrictions on the property.
And, um, you had previously testified the proposed development of the site, um, as it relates to what we presented to the board would not impact in any way the environmental uh, monitoring or condition of the property. And as your, your testimony remain the same, that this project will not impact in any way your, your, your activities that are on site?
Uh, that's correct. It will not impact our ability to monitor the plume, uh, for the, uh, the remainder of the day and the permit.
A second question that was raised is that there are apparently wells located on the village's property across the street. Uh, we had to look into that and investigate and determine whether they are in fact BP well. Have you had a chance to do that?
Uh, yes, so, uh, BP has not, uh, installed any wells on that side of Route. Uh, there is a well search document that shows the location of a well, uh, off of, I believe it's Arbor Drive, uh, but that well is not associated with BP or the, uh, the case ongoing at the, uh, the subject property. Uh, the findings were also reviewed by the, uh, Powell Environmental Commission going back a few years, about 2016 timeframe. And, uh, basically at that point, the environmental commission, after, uh, multiple visits to the site, uh, found no indication that there was a monitoring well there, so they could not locate an, well, well on that side of the prop, or that side of Route 9, rather.
And, um, can you give the board your, your feeling as to, or opinion as to whether there will be an impact of the remediation on the project and whether the construction proposal for the project will in any way interfere with the location monitoring?
Uh, currently, we don't believe there's any impact to our current network of monitoring wells. Uh, there is, there is a mechanism with NJDEP that we can relocate the monitoring well and submit an amendment to our remedial action permit.
And during the course of this development, the applicant coordinate with your office, if there is going to be, is that correct?
That's my understanding. That's correct.
All right, and the, the, there are two other questions that came up. Um, if there's a gas, gasoline spill from, from a gas pump filling a car, would that in any way impact the monitoring?
Uh, so, uh, first of all, uh, monitoring poles used for our monitor purpose of the, uh, the CEA case uh, would not be located within the, uh, the tank or the, uh, the new tank location. Uh, the outside of the footprint of where those tanks are, and the way a monitoring well is constructed, uh, they have a protective road cap and they also have an expandable plug that goes inside the top of the monitoring well that prevents any liquid or foreign liquids from the surface, uh, from entering well.
And the final question was, uh, clarification as to whether or not there was any off-site contamination resulting from this spill in question?
Uh, no, there's not. So, uh, when the, uh, the original tank, uh, remediation occurred, the soil remediation, approximately 20 soil were removed from the property. It's verified by post-excavation sampling. Uh, there were, uh, a few rounds of soil sampling at it back in 2011. Uh, that confirmatory sampling was all below standards in effect, uh, indicating there's no off-site contamination and currently after the, uh, tanks were removed with the, uh, the soil that went off of the tanks, it's remaining on the site above applicable standards. Uh, as far as groundwater, uh, the plume is within in the property boundaries and, uh, those figures, uh, showing the delineation of the plume and the current extents of the plume are documented in our remedial action report that was submitted to NJDEP in 2018 and, uh, also reiterated in our remedial action permit application, which is currently under review, uh, with the NJDEP.
And when that permit is issued, you, will you agree that you'll provide a copy to my office?
Correct. We will.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chair, that's, those were the only follow-up questions we had of, of Mr. Simon. Thank you. Appreciate that. Does anybody from the board have any comments or questions?
Uh, yeah. A- as a fellow LSRP, Rich, um, you know, we have three LSRP's on the environmental commission, reviewed all the documents and everything, and I think something that's getting missed here, that's, this has been an ongoing case for a long time, is there's a responsible party, okay? It's not the developer right now, okay? It's the responsible party that was there prior. Rich is the LSRP, licensed, taken care of. That needs to be stressed. Uh, number two, we don't see as far as the three LSRP's on the environmental commission that there's any issue whatsoever, uh, what that has been done, nor that what needs to be done in the future. There, there will be future monitoring, uh, as required. Um, what Rich is talking about is called a remedial action permit. And the DEP, right now, there's not many people in Trenton. Uh, so typically, these things take a long time when there are people in Trenton. They're, they're very significantly like delayed right now. So, um, as far as, you know, I go, I, I, I don't see any issues as far as an environmental. I think every, everything's been done right. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Counselor? If there's no more, nothing from your side of the fence, could we, is there any other testimony that you're going to present today?
Yes, do you, um, are you going to hold the public questions until the witnesses are finished?
I think that's probably the best way to handle that today, considering it's, it's almost 10 o'clock.
Yeah, that's fine with me. So, Mr. Mr. Simon, don't go away. You might be asked some questions momentarily.
Okay.
Mr. Alciello is our next witness.
Mr. Alfieri, I don't, I don't remember. Did Mr. Alciello testify previously?
He has not, no.
Oh, no, no. Not on this application.
Right.
Okay. All right, so do you swear or affirm the testimony you about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
It's, uh, Justin Alciello, A-U-C-I-E-L-L-O, with, uh, Gafon Consulting Group, Red Bank.
Okay, if you can just qualify him, Mr. Alfieri.
Mr. Alciello, we're seeking to have you qualified as a professional planner. Would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so I have a master's degree in city regional planning, uh, from Rutgers University in 2005. Uh, I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since, uh, 2007. Uh, I provided testimony, uh, in front of, uh, more than, um, 150 land use boards, uh, throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, I have appeared in Howell previously. Uh, I've appeared, uh, multiple times at the zoning board, uh, at the planning board. Uh, I appeared over the summer. And I believe that was back in June.
Look up your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Justin, this is a, um, convenience store, gas station is a, a, is a, um, conditional use in this zone. Um, would you provide your testimony first as to whether we meet the conditions that are set forth in the ordinance, please?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so as the board i- is, is familiar, this site is located, um, the White Koff Mills Road and Route 9, uh, block 140, lots 1234.01, uh, in, in the HD1 zone. Um, and I'm not going to belabor the point of, uh, what, what currently exists or, or previously existed, um, uh, you know, on this property and also the improvements. I think the, the board has heard, uh, you know, much testimony to that effect. However, um, you know, as to the, the conditional use, um, requirements, uh, there are, um, some variances that are required with this application. Um, and as to the lot area, uh, as required is, uh, is, is 80,000 square feet. Uh, the existing condition lot area is 28,641 square feet. Um, the next standard that we don't meet is, uh, the lot coverage, uh, and the maximum allowed is 70%. Uh, and as proposed, uh, the lot coverage is 71.5%. Uh, the next variance is for the, uh, the front yard setback. And this is, this is interesting because, uh, since, and I'll, you know, get into this a bit later, but, uh, this property has frontage, uh, actually three front yards, um, White Koff Mills, and then the road kind of curves a bit when it gets towards Route 9. I believe in the board planner's letter, that's noted as a second front yard. Uh, and then the third front yard is on, is on Route 9. So, uh, the minimum, um, front yard setback is 60 feet. A, a front yard of, of 15 feet is proposed along Route 9 for the convenience store, uh, 13, 13.42, I'm sorry, um, 13.42 feet for the canopy and 59 feet for the, um, kiosk structure. Uh, on, on White Koff Mills, there's a setback of 23.7 feet. Uh, for the convenience store, uh, for the kiosk, 30 feet and, uh, 12.8 feet for the canopy. Uh, the next variance required is, um, the minimum, uh, side yard setback is 25 feet, uh, or the height of the building, uh, whichever is greater. And as proposed, there's a setback of, of five feet from the, uh, northern side yard. Uh, the accessory buildings are permitted in the side or rear yards only. And, uh, the accessory structures as proposed are located in the front yard for, uh, Route 9 and, um, White Koff Mills Road. There are, uh, a number of variances. Um, Mr. Chair, do you, do you want me to go through all these variances? There are a number of them. Um, I'll defer over to, uh, to you, sir.
Okay, um, and I'll defer to my professionals. Uh, Mr. Cuchero, do we need to swear Laura back in?
Uh, I think Laura was sworn in earlier in the, uh, in the hearing process. My, uh, subject to Laura, my recommendation would be that let's identify what the variances are. And then I think, you know, I mean, well, number one, you can handle it however you want to handle it. It's your application. My recommendation would be we identify, uh, the variances and you go through them. If you want to go through them, you know, collectively, that's fine. And then if you want to identify any design waivers and address them, you know, you can, uh, you can do that. Uh, but I don't, you know, I, I can leave it to you. I don't know that we need to go through positive and negative criteria for each individual variance versus, you know, taking some of them collectively that are similar in nature.
Okay, great. Yeah, you know, um, uh, you know, because we were here for, for three hours, so, uh, you know, just trying to be respectful to you, Mr. Chair, and not take up too much of your time.
Well, let's not waste your time. You do, you do what you provide testimony that you need to provide.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. That's much appreciated. Um, uh, so, so for the variances, uh, I see this, uh, as, as C1 variances. Uh, the, uh, the state, um, land use law statute allows for a showing of, uh, either a hardship under the C1, uh, or, or the benefits, um, that outweigh the detriments under the C2, also known as, uh, as flexible C. Um, but I actually see them a- as a mixture of both. Uh, and I'll tell you why I, you know, think that there are numerous hardship And I'll tell you why I, you know, think that there are numerous hardship factors here that are at play. You know, as to the, not only the layout of the site, but what surrounds the site, as I had previously said, there are three frontages, two on White Koff Mills Road and one on Route 9. So when we're looking at the front and rear yard setback issues, not only are we impacted given the fact that we have three front yards and one rear yard, but also the irregular nature of the property. It's oddly shaped as it goes toward the curvature of White Koff Mills going towards Route 9. So as it's stated in the board planner's letter, and I'll quote, the shape of the property, I'm sorry?
No, it's all right then.
Okay, the, the shape of the property on the corner means that there is no rear yard. So like I had said, there are three front yards, that is a clear hardship. Also, you know, given the length of the property, which is much greater than the width, it's, it would be, you know, unrealistic to really, you know, develop a use that would be practical at this location that would be compliant with all of the setback requirements. So that's another issue, in my opinion, you know, as to the hardship here. However, when you're looking at the C2 aspect of this, or the flexible C, I would say that despite these hardships, the applicant has managed to design a plan that's safe and works for the site, you know, given these constraints. Also, it's important to remember that the property was previously used as a service station, and it's my opinion that this is a substantial upgrade to their previous use. And also, as to the impervious coverage, which is only a minor increase from the existing condition, I would also say that with, it's my professional opinion that the stormwater management upgrades mitigate that slight increase in the impervious coverage. So with respect to the purposes of zoning, under the C2 analysis, that it's my opinion we advance, I would say that it advances criteria G. I believe that there is sufficient space, you know, for this commercial use. And I would also say criteria M, I believe that this is an efficient use of the lands as well. So as I had said, given those hardships, and despite those hardships, the applicant has managed to develop this site in a way that would be efficient and suitable for this property at this location in a zone where it's permitted. Lastly, as the board is aware, there are two prongs of the negative criteria. The first is whether or not the variances would present a substantial detriment to the public good. Now, it's not any detriment, the law says that any potential detriment must rise to the level of being substantial. It's my opinion that in this application, there is no substantial detriment to the public good. This is a significant upgrade of the property, as I had said, safe and functional. The site is next to a commercial use to the north, and also is along Route 9, a commercial corridor. That also feeds into my opinion as to the purposes of the master plan. The redevelopment of the site is consistent with a general goal of the purpose of the master plan. Master plan also speaks to the need to adapt to the changing dynamics and demands of the community as well, the economy. So certainly, I would say that not only is there no substantial detriment to the public good, but we also advance the aims of the master plan. And lastly, I don't see that the granting of this variance or these variances would impair the intent of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. I certainly, again, this is a permitted use in the HD1 zone, and I believe that, that if the board so chooses to grant approval, it can be done in a way that advances the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance. That concludes my testimony, thank you.
Mr. Ausiello, just a follow-up. So the variances that you just described are all the C variances. As I started at the beginning, look, my question to you, this property is a, this use is a conditional use in the zone, and there are three conditions that the ordinance sets forth that have to be met in order to qualify as a permitted conditional use as opposed to a D variance use that would have to go to the zoning board. Although the planner, the board planner acknowledges in his report that we meet those conditions, I just wanted you to confirm that we do in fact meet those three conditions.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And these conditions, as noted on page, this looks like page three of the April 12, 2019 letter from the board planner. These conditions are set forth, that's section 188, 98.4 in the zoning ordinance. And those conditions are, A, the location of a gas station and convenience center shall be limited to corner lots fronting on a state highway and with direct access from both the highway and the intersection street, we meet that. B is any gasoline station and convenience center, which includes the accessory on-premise food consumption, shall limit the floor area devoted to such activities to 20% of the gross floor area of the principal building, we meet that, we comply there. And C, there should, there shall be no drive-through facilities associated with the gasoline station and convenience center, we comply with that as well.
All right, thank you, that concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. So no other further witnesses?
No, that's all.
Okay. Does anybody from the board have any comments? Any of our professionals comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just state on the record, I know this case has spanned some time, so in lieu of not saying anything, I would note that the applicant's engineer previously agreed to comply with all comments in our report, and therefore I have nothing additional at this time.
Yeah, and I believe that there was also some, I know it's not this, but architectural stuff, there was a whole bunch of stuff that was agreed to over the last couple testimonies. And you got your, we'll cut out for you for the resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, thank the applicant for the confirmation on the conditional use requirements and the testimony. There's been numerous hearings leading up to this one, so in going through my notes, all my questions have essentially been answered at this point, so I've, you know, I think the testimony was complete, I think they covered all the bases on the proofs, and I have nothing further at this time.
Thank you. As far as the board members are concerned, you know, I don't fit all the board members on my screen, so I can't see visually if you have any questions or comments, so if you could unmute yourself.
Just Brian, again, with the environmental, we've been through this over and over and over again. It's not the applicant's, it's the obligation of the prior, okay? And that needs to be stressed, thousand.
Understood, thank you. Anybody else got comments?
Nick kind of answered my question, because I know we've seen through a couple meetings, so if he's, if he's good with it, that's good for me.
I guess, I just feel like, you know, looking at it as many times as we had, yes, we all recognize it's a very oddly shaped lot, but there's nothing we can do about it, and I just don't know what else you would ever put on this piece of property.
Okay.
Read.
Thank you.
I agree as well.
Okay. All right, I guess at this point, we'll open it up to the public? Eileen, do we have anybody from the public?
Sal, I just want to confirm, these are all the, your case is over now.
Our case is over, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, when we open it to the public, I would open it for questions and testimony.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So now we're at point, that's right, we had, we had, we did not do testimony yet. So if anybody has any questions or testimony that they'd like to speak about on this application, please feel free to do so. It is after 10 o'clock, I'm committed to stay under our hour or several to see if we can get to a conclusion on this application. Do we need to, do I need to just make that decision?
I'm in.
Mr. Cuchero?
You're the hearing officer, so it's up to you.
All right, we're making that decision. Okay.
If any members of the public wish to ask questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature, and you will be brought into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio, video, and you will need to give us your name, address, I do have someone raising their hand.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd just like to know, what was the address?
Actually, sir, let me just swear you in first, and then you can get going. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you got to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, but I'm not giving testimony, I just wanted to know what is the, is the address?
Well, you still have to, you still have to identify yourself.
My name is Guy Vastola.
And your address, sir?
1299 Highway 33.
Okay, go ahead.
I just like to know, what is the address that we're speaking about now?
It's 695 US Highway 9.
That clarifies it for me, yes, I was late in the Zoom meeting, and I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything in particular, thank you, that's all I need to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, anybody else?
Give me one second.
Okay, Eileen, while you're doing that, Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
Between the last hearing and this hearing, we did receive numerous exhibits from members of the public. Those exhibits, those exhibits were placed on the exhibit list and sent to you, do you have any objections to any of those items? Or can we just?
I have objections to relevancy as they come up, but no objection to them being offered, no.
All right, so then we'll move all those into evidence then, okay, thank you.
If there's any other members of the public that wish to speak on this application, please raise your hand.
Do we have, how many people do we have in the public?
Yeah, and several of them are part of the applicant team.
Yes, I see a couple of the gills.
We'll still give it a few moments, you know, just for people to, you know, try and use the technology if they're struggling.
Ron, do we just want to open it up to everybody real quick, and if someone has something, they can speak, and then we can try to narrow it down to those 13?
Well, no, it's, Eileen has done it, you know, there's a raise your hand feature, so anyone who wants, I mean, there may be people who are just here to watch.
And we're, and we're still, we're in full compliance of all of the state's emergency regulations for using.
That's correct.
And if they don't raise their hand, they can't be brought in, correct?
Well, also, we did provide, I believe, Eileen, a telephone number as well for access, correct?
I do have one person on the phone, but they're not calling in here, it's just they've used their phone to call into the meeting.
And there's a way to participate, only one person on the phone, and if you want to participate using the phone, I believe there's a number also, right?
Yes.
What number is that?
There's several numbers.
No, I mean, if you, once you call the numbering, you get in, I believe there's like, like two digits or something that you would press if you wanted to raise your hand.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Yeah, so let's just, let's just open it up to everybody that's in the public there.
Okay.
Eileen, just make sure we don't miss anybody. Bring them all in, let's open it up, let's, if, as we're opening, if everybody can just be respectful and not try to talk over one another, and then...
We don't need to bring the gills in though, correct?
This is... Mr. Alfieri?
You can bring them in, but I will not let them speak, so you can let them in.
Let us know when it's all open, Eileen, and it's unmuted.
Hello? Eileen, it's Barbara Dixel. Hold on one second, Barbara.
Okay, anybody else?
We're getting some feedback.
I know Ms. Dixel wants to speak, so I'm going to mute everybody else and let her go for now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, do you have video?
I have the video. I'm watching you. You have the cameras there.
Ms. Dixel, she's asking if you can turn your video on so we can see you.
It's on. I'm looking, I'm looking.
No, your, your video has to be on, so you're projecting yourself to us.
No, no, I don't know how to do all this modern stuff, I just have to, I have to read something from the Villages Board of Trustees.
Okay, well, let's get you on the record, Mrs. Dixel, because you're providing testimony now, so.
All right. Mrs. Dixel, you swear or affirm the testimony you got to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
My name is Barbara Dixel. D as in David, I as E, L as in Larry. I live at 62A Piazza Victoria, Freehold, New Jersey, 07728, The Villages.
Okay, hold on one second, Mrs. Dixel. Mr. Alfieri, you heard Ms. Dixel is seeking to read something into the record from the HOA, from the Villages, do you have an objection?
Well, is Mrs. Dixel a member of the Board of Directors?
No, I'm a county committee woman from The Villages.
All right, so I would object to any statement read, read on the behalf of the Board of Directors if she's not a member of the Board of Directors.
I don't know, Eileen, I gave this, I gave the letter to you, I've delivered this letter to you from the board. Can you read the letter into the record?
Mr. Chair, hold on, Mrs. Dixel, Mr. Chairman, what I would recommend is, to the extent that I believe whatever that letter is also represents Ms. Dixel's personal viewpoint, that she just read it into the record and the board can give it its appropriate weight. So go ahead, Mrs. Dixel, please read it.
I delivered this letter to the township planning board, to Eileen, twice. I don't know why you're not...
Mrs. Dixel, Mrs. Dixel, we've given, we've given you the ability to read it, please do so.
The Villages Board of Trustees and management are opposed to the application of Gil Petroleum to reopen as an active gas station with regular gas pumps. to reopen, um, as, as active gas station with regular gas pumps, uh, diesel gas for trucks, and, uh, convenience store. I also have bad eyesight. I'm trying. Okay, the Villages... Okay, okay. I don't know. Oh, God. For the site map, um, this former gas station, uh, is an undersized non-conforming lot in every direction. Um, it's our opinion that this gas station, if reopened, um, may operate with safety issues as it is all contaminated. Just bear with me. I have maculose degeneration and my eyesight's not good, so just bear with me. Um, wait, how do I get this done? All right. Um, right directly opposite this gas station on Whitecoff Mills Road is the Villages Age-Restrictive Development, 671 homes, and more than a thousand elderly senior citizens. Several years ago, um, San T, oh, I don't know, um, okay, Stan Tech flew Ryan Turner in from North Carolina uh, to meet with Mrs. Dixel, um, a member of the Democratic County Committee and representative, uh, for the Villages, for the Villages. He gave Mrs. Dixel maps of the gas station and the contamination. It took, it crossed Whitecoff and went toward the river.
Brian, Brian, where does this end? I mean, come on.
Okay, if you want me to stop, I will. If you want me to stop, I will.
It, it's under the jurisdiction of an LSRP right now that's doing its job. Like, who's a licensed?
Mrs. Mr. Al, I, I, I get it. Let me, let me see if I can deal with it. Mrs. Dixel, is this the same letter that was issued to the planning board in August of this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we have, we've read it, and we understand. If you have anything else you'd like to add to the letter or add, or provide any testimony or comments for you personally, please.
Yes, yes. Okay, um... Hold on, just a minute. I also have a letter from... Okay. I have a letter from, uh, Richard Doobie, who is the, the previous, who's now retired. He's the previous, uh, major access permit manager, uh, for DOT. And, um, I had written to him, and, and his response to me was...
Do we have a copy, Mrs. Dixel, do we have a copy of that letter that you're about to discuss?
Oh, Eileen, it, the last time, you asked me to give you one of everything that I have, and I gave it to you.
Okay.
I, I gave you one of everything in my box. Hold on one second. Doobie's letter is dated December 29th, 2015.
I believe pretty confidently, Mr. Chair, that we have seen this letter.
Mr. Doobie's letter is now up on the screen.
Mr. Chair, with, with, with all due respect, okay, we've seen all this stuff. And, and we've rehashed this over and over and over again. I'm gonna state my point for the last time, and I'm, I'm gonna put myself on mute. We have an LSRP that is taking care of the property. Former property owner is the responsible party. They're doing everything right. We're doing, we're, we're going over this, I mean, I, I, I feel bad right now for the gills, to be honest, that they're going through this process over and over again. And that's where I, that's where I stand.
Mr. Al, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, but we're unfortunately in the public portion of testimony. And we, we helped, we helped Mrs. Dixel. We helped Mrs. Dixel to the feet to the fire when she was able to, to ask questions of each one of the witnesses through this process. And we told her she would have the opportunity to provide her testimony.
Okay.
And we kept, we kept pulling her back. So, so you, Mrs. Dixel, things that you've discussed in the past as far as your, your comments to the applicant, if you could provide your, a testimony that you've always wanted to provide during the, the
All right.
The event, we really, we'd really like to hear about your testimony, please.
So, okay, will, will all the, will, will the property be landscaped and burned? Will, will, will the lighting not be too bright for the Villages residents that are right opposite, left, right opposite the gas station? Um, will the, the, the seniors residents are, are, are entitled to equality of life? Um, it, it, well, it, this thing is a, it's a detriment to the public good, to be honest with you. But will, 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 okay, the, the lighting, the signs, the signs, the size of the signs, will, will they, can be not abusive?
Okay, what else you got?
Um, okay, your, your vehicle, your vehicle, uh, uh, plan, are, are, are you coming in on 9 North and going out on Whitecoff?
I, I, this is Mr. Alfieri speaking. Uh, these are all questions that we answered during testimony. We could, I could, I could summarize the responses.
Well, let, let, let's let Mrs. Dixel finish, and you can respond in any way you think is appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Dixel.
When you come in on, we kid them on 9, and with an oil tanker truck, go out on Whitecoff. On the corner of Whitecoff and Strickland is the Villages entrance. There's also a four-ton weight limit sign there. They cannot go down Whitecoff Mills Road. There's a four-ton weight limit sign on the corner of County Road 524 and Whitecoff.
I believe the testimony was, I believe the testimony, Mrs. Dixel, was they were going in and out of Route 9 only. But we'll, we'll, we'll make note of it and have the applicant, uh, restate that, how they're, how they're going to direct traffic for the trucks.
Okay, let me finish. An oil tanker truck with the amount of traffic that's coming up and down Whitecoff and Strickland with Woolies on one corner and Exxon on the other corner, and they cannot, the, the traffic is so massive that oil tanker trucks are gonna have a hard time making a left turn on Strickland and Whitecoff to go to Route 9 either north or south. Can, can your oil tanker trucks stay in and out on Route 9 like they are on Exxon? There is no Exxon that's open in the back. They have to, uh, according to how, according to how ordinance, um, that, that the gas station has to be on an intersection. This one isn't. It's in the middle of the street. So Exxon oil tanker trucks are in and out on Route 9. Your, your, your oil tanker trucks need to be in and out on Route 9. I'm desperately afraid of one of these trucks hitting a, a tank. There's, there's an undersized non-conforming lot in every direction. And I don't know how an oil tanker truck is gonna, um, deliver gasoline, whether it's diesel, regular, the convenience store, cars and customers. I, I fear for some oil tanker trucks hitting either a gasoline tank, a car, a person, or the store. Can your tanker trucks, and I know that it's gonna be tough for them to back off, but going in on 9 North and coming out on Whitecoff really is not good. And, and what, are they gonna deliver gasoline 24/7? At what hours? But what are the hours that they're, they're gonna deliver gasoline? Hello?
But we're, we're taking notes of all of your comments, Mrs. Dixel, and then, then the applicant's gonna answer them. What else?
Mr. Chair, weren't these all answered already?
No, I was never given the chance to test.
Mr. Chair, my recommendation, rather than arguing with Mrs. Dixel, is let her finish. The applicant will respond however it feels appropriate.
Um, Exxon does not deliver gasoline at all hours of the day and night. They're, they're finished like 8, 9 o'clock. And what, what, what hours are you gonna open in the morning? Can, can anybody give any type of consideration to the Villages residents who live there and, and sort of adjust your hours and, and...
Well, let's see what they, let's see what they say, Mrs. Dixel. What else do you have, please?
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned about, um, uh, the garbage being, um, all encased. Um, are they gonna do any, like, Birmingham landscaping on this thing? Because right now, it's an absolute eyesore.
Yeah, great. What else you got?
Um, my, my main concern is the dignity and the quality of life of the Villages residents. Please, uh, with the signs, the signs, the noise, the delivery of gasoline at one hour, and, and go, and going in 9 North, in 9 North, out on Whitecoff, and making the left turn at, uh, Whitecoff and Strickland, and they can't go because of the four-ton weight limit sign. So, again, please, um, please address some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixel. Mr. Alfieri, do you have the list?
I do, and I'm gonna, I'll do my best. I, I know, Miss Dixel did have an opportunity to ask every witness a question, or many questions during the course of the testimony, and I believe all of them were answered. I'm, I'm looking at my notes to try and at least tell you what I, those notes from comments. One is lighting. We did have our engineer, it was asked specifically that we provide, um, the light, lighting details, and our engineer did come and present the testimony. Um, I can't technically, uh, parrot what he said, but I, um, I believe that he, he did indicate that the lighting was satisfactory and would not have an impact on those neighbors. The landscaping, uh, my notes were that, um, a question was asked as to whether we could buffer the Villages, and my, my, my notes say that Shari felt we were doing as much as we could in that area, and the Chief of Police, who was on, who was at the meeting as a board member, believed that the Villages had added and buffed on their own property, uh, and there shouldn't be any additional planting on this property on this side. As far as truck traffic is concerned, uh, Mr. Ray provided a very detailed testimony in support of the, the site circulation, um, active of the roads, et cetera. The board can, if it feels necess, necessary, impose whatever limitations it feels is necessary. Um, I, I can't remember the delivery time of the actual gasoline. I've looked through my notes. I don't see anything indicating what time limit that. Uh, but again, the, these questions were asked and answered. Um, I know the lighting was shielded. I think those were all of her questions.
Garbage is, your garbage, the garbage is encased?
Yeah, we have the dump, we have the dumpsters and enclosures, uh, and, and the site's erect now. This will be nicely maintained once it's built and operational. It's, it'll be an improvement.
And sign sizes are within the ordinance requirements. You require no variances?
We had multiple sign variances at the beginning, and we greatly reduced them, but there are variances simply because we're all road frontage, so we really, we really can't comply with the full sign standards. But just to summarize, there's a freestanding sign. Uh, there's one canopy, there's canopy sign on the, uh, on the islands, then there's, there's a sod sign on the convenience store. All the other signs have...
Just as long as the signs are, are, are not so bright.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, we opened it up to Ms. Dixel. She's had her opportunity. Mr. Alfieri is now answering.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, and the testimony was at the time that the lighting, both the signs and the actual lighting, um, were not gonna, not gonna have, provide any additional light onto the Villages that already doesn't exist on Route 9.
Hours of operation?
Well, they, the hours of operation were 24/7, um, through the testimony. Um, client can control the delivery quantity of the truck, or it wants to impose reasonable limitations on when that can take place because they do control their vendors.
So you're saying, you're putting on, on testimony that the applicant would, would limit their truck deliveries to normal working hours?
Well, yeah, I, I think you may want to, maybe till 9:00 PM because, um, you, you may get a delivery after 6 o'clock. I don't know what the normal working hour is, but it won't be 1:00 AM in the morning, sir.
So, so 9:00 PM?
That's fine.
And what, what would be the start date that would be acceptable?
Um, 7:00 AM?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuchero?
Yes.
Has Mrs. Dixel concluded her testimony?
Yes.
At this point? Do we move on to see if the next applicant is, uh, or no, I'm sorry, is there any other witnesses that would like to speak? Sorry, getting late.
Yes, and with any other member of the public wish to ask?
Thank you, Mrs. Dixel.
You wish to ask questions of these two witnesses or provide testimony?
Everybody is in the hearing, so if they want to speak, they need to unmute?
Okay, Mr. Chair, everyone's in the hearing. No one has expressed an interest. I, I think you can close the hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Does, then, I missed, one last time, this concludes your, your testimony.
Yes, we have no further witnesses. I just want to make a one-minute summation when, when, if and when you're ready.
Um, I, let me just ask the board if there's anybody else on the board that has any further comments or questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Alfieri.
Just, I just want to remind the board of some of the conditions that we had agreed to during the course of the testimony. Uh, we had agreed, of course, to address all of the technical comments contained within the board professional reports. We have agreed that the LSRP will be onsite for all subgrade construction activity. We agreed that there will be no indoor seating at the convenience store. Um, we, we agreed to install a crosswalk on Whitecoff Mills Road. We agreed to meet with, um, it was Mr. Herman at the time. Um, so we meet with the township engineer to come up with a design so that the crosswalk to the, to the traffic signal. Um, we agreed to... Uh, there was a question of whether the board wanted us to bank two parking spaces at the, um, the southernmost portion of the property. Uh, there was never a decision made. Um, if we did bank those two spaces, the lot coverage variance would be eliminated. Um, agreed that the diesel fuel area would be limited to vans and small box trucks and cars, no larger vehicles.
Just, uh, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because if it's banked, it could be developed at some point.
Right, only during the period of time when it's banked. But you're right, if they're installed subsequently, if the board wants, if the town required it, then the variance would be triggered. And the last thing we agreed to previous to tonight was that we would have bollards placed in the areas. We'd work with your engineer to make sure there were bollards in the various... in the various location, parking spaces. And then tonight, we agreed to that delivery time limitation. Um, and we'd request, based on those conditions and any other conditions the board wishes to impose, that the board grant the approval. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Alfieri, I I also believe, from remember, my remembering from the testimony, the, um, exhaust fan for the kitchen hood that was going out the back of the building, which would be visible from Route nine if you're traveling south on Route nine, that you were gonna provide appropriate screening to make sure that that, uh, mechanical apparatus was was part of the architecture and not necessarily just sewn as a silver.
That's, that's correct. That's true.
Mr. Chairman, I also have in my notes that the LSRP will submit the remedial investigation report and permit upon approval from the DEP. And I also had that sidewalk was gonna be installed on the property.
Hey. Um, well, I'll entertain a motion.
So an affirmative motion would be to grant preliminary and final site plan approval, uh, with ancillary, uh, all ancillary variance and design waiver relief and including all conditions placed upon the record.
Uh, per, per Ron's, uh, this conversation, I will make a motion to do that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm second.
Okay.
I think that was.
Roll call, please. Uh, actually, do, um, do you have the list of everybody who is eligible? I forgot to ask that when we first started this.
The only people eligible are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Huster, Mr. Leggio, watched the videos and certified, so he can vote, Mr. Seaman and Mr. Tannenhouse.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eileen.
Roll call, please.
I watched the videos.
You did? Okay, I didn't know that, Dave. I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll just need you to fill out the certification after the hearing.
I did.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Huster?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
All right.
Eileen, you'll send me that certification?
I will, Dave. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we, can we mute, mute Mrs. Dixel?
I think we're just about to adjourn anyway.
We are.
Everybody have a good night. Okay.
Good night.
Well, I, I think, we don't have, we don't have any reason to go to some type of executive session or 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 further discuss. And we are, we are meeting one more time before the holidays?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only two little things on there, so hopefully it stays.
We'll send our holiday, we'll send our holiday wishes at that time.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. You will.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.